Good morning, welcome to this special meeting of the City Council for April 14th, 2021. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with emergency directives from Governor Sisalak. Therefore, in-person attendance is limited for the meeting. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. With that, I will call the meeting to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This special meeting is being conducted for interviews of city manager candidates. We will begin by opening our first public comment period. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item. As always, we ask speakers to be concise and civil with their comments. Again, this is our initial public comment period. Madam City Clerk, do we have written comments that were submitted for public comment?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
If you would please go ahead with those.
All right, the first public comment is from Barry Courtney. I am a retired public servant from the City of Henderson and am a resident of Boulder City. As much as I respect the council's desire to achieve transparency and appreciate the opportunity to participate in the city manager interviews, as they will be done publicly and broadcasted live, I can't help but wonder if this process is actually going to achieve what the council would like to do. Will the council actually get the best applicant if the applicants have had the opportunity to watch the interviews prior to their own? Seems to me this is an unfair advantage for some applicants and not a level playing field from the start. Additionally, holding the interviews publicly seems to me to limit an applicant's ability to be candid, to fully explain, or answer questions, knowing that all of the information is public and due to the possible sensitive nature of questions asked. In all my recent years of public service, I have never seen a recruitment process progress like this. I hope the council has considered these issues and has instituted mitigations to prevent a skewed outcome. Next, members of the Boulder City Council. Hello, my name is Venetia Considine. I am an attorney with Legal Aid Center of Southern Nevada, and I currently represent Assembly District 18 in the Nevada State Legislature. I've had a few roles in my 12 years at Legal Aid Center, including as the Law Clerk Program Supervisor in the Consumer Rights Project. The Consumer Rights Project focuses on representation of indigent clients facing unlawful foreclosures, predatory lenders, and fraud. It is in this capacity that I got to know Brittany Walker, as I supervised her when she was a law clerk for the unit. She was the best law clerk I worked with throughout my time overseeing the law clerk program in the Consumer Rights Program and the law clerk program for all of the Legal Aid Center. Brittany clerked at Legal Aid Center her entire second year of law school, in part because we kept inviting her to come back. During her time at Legal Aid Center, Brittany assisted our unit with many consumer rights legal claims, preparing complaints, drafting motions, reviewing complicated financial documents, and writing various research memoranda. Brittany provided valuable initial research during the early stages of a class action lawsuit wherein victims were being sued for expired debts. I got to know Brittany well and learned how passionate she is about helping others. During her initial interview for the law clerk position, she said her primary reason for going to law school was to give back to her community, which I have often heard, but what stuck with me was that her community was not an abstract thing. Brittany shared experiences of how her family and community were affected by certain laws, and she connected those to the impact good government can have on a community. In private practice, Brittany continued to provide pro bono representation to indigent clients, volunteering over 100 hours of service through Legal Aid Center's pro bono project in both 2019 and 2020. She also currently volunteers for our small business project, helping local business owners affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. So it is no surprise to me that she applied for this position. Brittany has the heart and mind for public service. She understands and empathizes with the hardships of others and believes the role of government is to serve as a steward of the people. Brittany would be an invaluable city attorney and ensure the city government operates fairly and equitably for all the citizens of Boulder City. Sincerely, Venetia Considine. Next, Mayor and Council Members. I am writing in support of Brittany Walker Esquire for the position of City Attorney of Boulder City, Nevada. My name is Ian Bartram. I'm a Boulder City resident and a professor of constitutional law, constitutional theory, jurisprudence, and law of religion at William S. Boyd Law School at the University of Nevada Las Vegas. Brittany is a former student of mine. Brittany stood out to me during her time at Boyd, as she was always well-prepared, thoughtful, and articulate during class discussions. She excelled in constitutional law, receiving top marks in both constitutional law courses offered at Boyd. A city attorney's understanding of constitutional law is extremely important for the role, both as a criminal prosecutor and a legal advisor to the city. Government entities must be painstakingly aware of the constitutional constraints contained in the United States Constitution and latest jurisprudence, more so than private entities. For example, a city attorney must always take into account the First Amendment when considering regulations involving speech, assembly, or religion. And the city attorney should be aware of the latest jurisprudence governing individual property rights, the Commerce Clause, and the limitations on local government power in general. As a student, Brittany demonstrated exceptional comprehension of the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. She read every case and was enthusiastic and passionate about constitutional law. I was impressed by her capacity for knowledge and belief she will serve as an outstanding city attorney. As a long-term resident of Boulder City, I very much hope you will retain her in a permanent position. Sincerely, Ian Bartram, Professor of Law.
Dear Mayor and Members of Council. My name is Scott Shearer. I was born and raised in Southern Nevada, and I have been a member of the Nevada Bar for more than 36 years. I am currently a shareholder at Brownstein Hyatt Farber Schreck and a former partner of Holland &amp; Heart. While I have significant experience in private practice, I understand the role of public sector lawyer due to my experience as a member of the Nevada Gaming Control Board, a Deputy Attorney General in the Nevada Attorney General's Office, a member of the Nevada Commission on Ethics, a member of the Nevada Assembly, and as General Counsel and Chief of Staff for Nevada Governor Kenny Gwynn. I am writing to recommend Brittany Walker for appointment to the Office of City Attorney for the City of Boulder City, Nevada. I got to know and work with Brittany both when she was a legal extern at Holland &amp; Heart during her last year of law school and when she worked as an associate for Holland &amp; Heart. Brittany is bright, capable, and diligent. If she doesn't know the answer to a question or the solution to a problem, she applies herself and her intellect to find a working solution. While she is still relatively young, she has common sense beyond her years that helps her approach issues with a focus on what is actually practical for the client, in this case, the city of Boulder City. I do not know the other candidates for the position, and the following comments are in no way intended to reflect on them, but I have learned over my years practicing law that I would prefer to work with and get better results for clients from colleagues who are bright, talented, and dedicated, as opposed to those who are simply more experienced. Another thing that I have learned is that people who are bright, talented, and dedicated are sometimes more difficult to work with. Brittany is both talented and easy to work with. If she has had the opportunity to become the acting city attorney for the city of Boulder City, a position that was a great fit for her skills and interests, I would gladly try to hire her at my new firm, but she decided to leave Holland &amp; Heart. When leaving Holland &amp; Heart, Brittany was not just seeking another challenge. She wants to be the city attorney for the city of Boulder City. That desire to do the job even with an understanding of what it entails is another quality that I believe makes her an excellent candidate. I could not recommend her more highly. If you have any questions or I may be of assistance, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Scott Shearer. And that's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Again, this is our initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to comment? Hearing no others for the initial public comment period, we will close the public comment period and move to the first item on the agenda, matters pertaining to the city manager position. Mr. Bolt.
Good day, Mayor and Council. I'm Bryce Bolt, Administrative Services Director. Item one for possible actions are matters pertaining to the city manager position, and that will include interviews of the named applicants, and then city council direction regarding those candidates. And Sarah McKee is here today to facilitate those interviews, and I'll turn it over to her.
And so, very similar to the city attorney, we'll have questions for the candidates. In this situation, obviously, they'll be via video, so you will be able to see them on your laptop as well as up on the big screen, too. So I will be asking all the questions today, but obviously, if you have a follow-up question, please feel free to do that. We want you to be able to have a full understanding of the candidates and ask any questions that would lead to your understanding of their management style or how they would perform as your city manager. So with that, the first candidate is Jessica Brown, and she's in the waiting room if we're ready to get started.
Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning.
Can you hear us okay?
Yes, just fine, thank you.
Perfect, all right. So Jessica, I'm going to be asking all the questions today, and then we'll have a chance for you to ask questions of them later on. And with that, we will get started. So tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the city manager position in Boulder City at this point in your career.
Well, thank you. Actually, it's kind of an easy fit. I know that the council is aware of the fact that I do have a little history with Boulder City, and ultimately, that's where our family would like to end up, and this opportunity was absolutely ideal, and I could not pass it up. To begin with, I think what's important is I have worked for many different structures of government, including a council manager, council administrator, boards of directors, as well as the county function under a CEO. With each structure, the skill set for a manager or administrator varied, depending on the needs and goals and objectives of each agency. Some were heavily reliant on economic development, while others were focused on fiscal sustainability. But regardless of the structure, the core of every agency is finance. An agency cannot move forward without finance, and I believe that finance serves as the core of every how of everything that we do in a public setting. I believe, you know, my background is very well-aligned to serve this city well. I've had the opportunity to work with these agencies, and naturally provides me just with a broader spectrum, so to speak, of experience from which decisions can be made from, not to mention, I also have a very robust professional network of resources to draw from. I have about 20, over 20 years of public service. Had the opportunity to serve California agencies of the city of Placentia, which is a full-service city, as the Finance Director, as well as the city of Rialto, which is also a full-service city. And for those viewing, that just means that these cities provide a full spectrum, such as Boulder City for fire, police, and other responsibilities, such as road streets and so on and so forth. I also had the opportunity to serve at the Lake Arrowhead Community Services District, which was water and sewer, as the Finance Director, as well as Apple Valley Fire Protection District. These are all very important because they represent the core services that the city provides, so I have a very in-depth knowledge of those services, their finances, as well as operations. I have served in various capacities as well over the last five years. The populations of the cities that I have served are 14,000 up to 2.1 million, including the city of Placentia, which is just over 50,000. The budgets I have managed have been over $24 million to $300 million, including currently the city of Placentia being $66.5 million and the city of Rialto being just over $300 million. I've also had the opportunity to serve in cities that have employees of just shy of 300 employees. I also believe that I'm a very good candidate, strong candidate, with respect to what it means for the city manager and the responsibilities of the city manager. Building on my experience, I understand the responsibilities the city manager should and what they need in order to excel in this capacity. I believe that the city manager definitely needs to be in sync with the goals of council, and throughout my career, I've had a tremendous success in building and maintaining relationships with government bodies that I've served, and I have the political acumen to be very successful in those spaces. I've also had the opportunity to work with many different governing bodies and have built a reputation of integrity, trust, and the ability to listen and communicate in a manner that has resulted in some really strong professional relationships. I have demonstrated throughout my career that, you know, one of the importance of a city manager and why I believe I would succeed at this and serving the city of Boulder City, to be responsive to the council at all times and to be able to find ways to accomplish tough tasks. I believe that, you know, no city is the same. However, my breadth of experience, I believe, allows me to pull from that experience to respond the way that I would need to respond in any instance that is set before me. I also just believe, too, that my leadership, I'm a strong leader. I'm a servant leader, and this is the style of leadership, and some of my greatest accomplishments have not been dollar signs and savings, but my ability to bring a team together. So to successfully execute, I manage some paradigm shifts that opportunity does always present itself, but I was able to navigate through that very successfully and to empower employees to see their potential. I also believe I had the skill set as well to really just lead the city, to work with city staff, as well as the council, to achieve the overall city goals and objectives that are set before me. And I just believe, too, that, as I indicated, my strong background, not just in finance, but in city services and the various roles that I have played of importance to the agencies that I have served, would really lend to be a true asset to the city overall.
So you kind of talked about your management style, but as a city manager, how would you describe your management style, and how do you think your coworkers would describe you?
Of course. Well, I think there's, you know, the old adage that you never get a second chance to make a first impression, and I really think that the first 30 to 16 days are just really critical. And I think it's important to really focus on and establish a foundation for good relationships. So one of the first things that I would do is not only, you know, meet and really get pulse of the council, but also with all of the directors. I have successfully, throughout my career, I've been able to really establish some strong professional relationships with the directors that I have worked with, and I believe that that would carry over into the role as city manager, and it would actually be a very smooth one for me. In the past, you know, I've been working, my desire is always to pull that team together. It's been a unique experience with respect to finance, because I truly believe that finance is the infrastructure. The departments, public services cannot move unless it is supported by finance. That is the how of the actions that we take. So because of that, it has put me in a position to really work very closely with my colleagues, establish the core relationships that are needed in order to be successful. And, you know, my experience always has been as well, I don't just manage from the top. I really like to understand why we are doing things, because I think communication is extremely important. So to be a public servant and to serve not only my team, the council, the residents of Boulder City, that communication starts with the rest of city staff, the rest of the team that would be necessary in order to move the agenda of the council forward. So it would start with communication and building those relationships. I also find that there are, I find myself being able to communicate at all levels, even difficult subject matters. So communication comes very easy to me, and I've been able to, even in difficult situations where we may not have a buy-in necessarily from other team members, to bring them along and understand why we're headed in a direction that we're headed in. So the relationships are crucial, communication's crucial, and doing what needs to be done in a team setting to ensure that everyone is working cohesively to accomplish those goals that are set before us.
Jessica, during difficult periods of transition, how would you address issues of staff morale and build a strong team?
I'm sorry, I've lost a little bit of the volume here. Could you say that again, Ms. McKee?
Sure. During difficult periods of transition, how would you address issues of staff morale and build a strong team?
Yes, fortunately, and I say fortunately, because bad situations lead to experience in how to handle things in the future. And fortunately, I've been in this situation many times during, throughout my career, where we've had transitional issues, whether it be me coming into a position, or whether it be other management changes that may have taken place. So I've had the experience specifically with the city of Rialto. That's where I was really successful in initiating and successfully completing a paradigm shift, not just within my department, but it happened citywide. The city had gone multiple years without a Finance Director, multiple years without a city manager, and upon my arrival and the way that I went about to harness and empower my team that I had with me, it started small, and then once I've got my team focused and moving forward, it was working with the other directors and making sure that we had that common focus. And when you're faced with difficult situations, it really truly just came down to the communication of the why and understanding why we are headed in a direction that we're headed in. So in the event that it was a difficult transition with Boulder City or any other position, my approach would be the same. My approach would be to begin to establish those relationships, because I believe trust is key. And once those relationships are in a process to move forward, I believe everybody then, with an increased level of confidence as well as trust, we can take steps going in the right direction. But I believe, too, that you could have instances and have experience where it's difficult to bring individuals along, and I think the approach gets modified with every individual that you work with. So once identified, you know, if a certain direction's not headed, then honing in on what might be some of the issues holding individuals back, or that outcomes are not necessarily as expected. I believe in the city manager position, you have to be 100% flexible. You have to be willing to look at things differently, and it's not necessarily one-size-fits-all in that type of situation. So I think it's critical to just to have that foresight, the vision of where you're headed, and as long as that is clear and communicated to everyone, then next is working on the path and how you're going about to get there, and then along with that, the why. So I think that all of those things working together, that's how I would bring an agency along to get them moving in the right direction.
Do you believe you have management weaknesses? And if so, what have you done to improve yourself for the city manager position in the last 24 months?
I've been fortunate enough to, I think initially, I had the opportunity to have both positive and negative experiences as I've served in these executive levels. And I look at the negative as turning them into a strength, so to speak. You know, I truly believe that at the end of the day, working, my work ethic is of such that I know that, and a norm I concerned about, the fact that in the event that, you know, I am doing my best and always putting in 100%, I'm going to be successful in whatever I do. I believe that the exposure that I have had with various managers has really afforded me the opportunity to have the perspective needed in order to serve as a city manager in working with different personalities and different individuals. So if I was to look back on maybe what a weakness may be, it's, I believe that, you know, having that initial vision on how to move forward, I have thinking that something should respond, react, that the outcome should be a certain manner. I believe that I've been able to take a step back and, over the course of the last couple years, adjust my focus, adjust my approach, so that I'm more effective as a manager. So I believe that I, thinking, you know, initially, especially early on in my management career, I had ideal perspectives, so to speak, that I believe that should work, and I believe that the vast breadth of experience that I've had with the individuals that I have worked with has really been able to allow me to be more flexible, more creative and innovative on how I work with different individuals there and their... on, on how I work with uh, different individuals there and, and their, um, whatever, what, how they were able to perform. So I think it's given me the, you know, the experience, uh, so to speak, of dealing with the vast majority of uh, um, all of the staff that I've worked with and, and whether they be staff that work for me or other uh, city employees. I believe that that experience has, um, although maybe early on may not be as successful, that I have learned from those and been able to be a better and stronger manager um, from those various instances that I have come across.
How do you see the city manager's role in relation to the city council, city staff, Boulder City residents and other governmental entities? And who do you believe you should support first, the staff, the council or the public?
I think that's a great question because I, I believe that the um, city manager's responsibilities, um, they're gonna, the, the core responsibilities are going to be the same no matter where you were serving. Um, and to start with, I believe that the council is the representation of the people. And the council is the what, the city manager is the how. So the, the council, although I may provide the council on policy, uh, direction or advice, um, the council ultimately is the one who's making those decisions. The city manager serves as the role of how to execute the city council's direction. So to me, that, that, that serves at every, every government agency that I have worked for. I truly believe and, and that's how I've seen it executed, and I believe that's exactly what it's meant to be. Um, I believe that, you know, I'd indicated a little bit earlier, some of the main responsibilities of the, the city manager, being in sync with the council, um, as well as being responsive to the council, I think those are critical. At the end of the day, the city manager cannot be successful unless they have the support of the city council. Um, and the way to get the support is to hear the direction, to understand the direction and be able to move those matters forward as provided by council. Um, I also believe that, you know, that the city manager needs to be able to find ways to accomplish really tough tasks. And I believe that the city manager needs to be uh, creative, needs to think out of the box, needs to be innovative. One great example of uh, one of these instances is recently with the, the city of Placentia. Um, as I'm aware, Boulder City is also receiving some of the American Rescue Relief, um, the Rescue Plan funds. And we have many needs in the city. So when you're looking at those needs and how to best utilize funding, um, one of the instances that came up was we have a broadband project that's going on in the city. And in conversations with the Public Works Director as well as the city manager, my statement was, you know, let's make the most out of these projects. And in the event that we're under grounding utilities, it'd be a great opportunity to repave our roads. Cost savings on both ends, some of it could be picked up by a broadband project that also would be covered by some of these additional funds that we would be receiving, and we also would get some economy of scale. Um, so you know, being, being able to accomplish tou- tough tasks, be able to accomplish things on, within budget and within um, the funding constraints are always extremely important. Um, I believe also that the city manager needs to be strategically and be able to creatively anticipate next steps or um, the needs of council or, and even of its detractors. I believe that I've been able to establish relationships with governing bodies that I have started, I've been able to manage and be very strategic and proactive, thus anticipating what the needs of councils are. Um, and therefore cutting down the timeframe on being able to get to our end result of that goal. Um, I have thorough preparation and presentation of items to council, so I believe that um, into publics I can effectively communicate these issues. Um, I will say that so- sometimes finance can be a complex issue to, to bring up with council as well as the public. And I believe that communication for the city manager, it's the city manager's responsibility to communicate communicate information, not just to the council, but as well to the public in a manner that it's understandable, gives them a level of co- confidence and understanding of their, the taxpayers' dollars. So I've been able to, in, you know, in, I've been able, I was, throughout the course of my career, I've been able to um, bring some of those major detractors of council and bring them to the side um, where they understand what's going on because at the end of the day, on the understanding and the why, um, and having confidence in numbers, I believe goes a long way. Um, and I've even been complimented by the council that I had given the best, um, some of the best presentations with respect to budget, and they never, they had not understood their budget as well as they had at the point in time that I had presented it. So I've been very successful in that, in that space overall with council. Um, and then of course to be a strong leader, but that, that also means um, taking the directive that council has provided the city manager, communicating it as well as the vision, as well as the direction and the how of how we're going to um, execute council's direction to directors is extremely important as well. Um, I, the directors need to, and I believe that the, I, I understand that Boulder City has got um, a pretty amazing executive staff, uh, was, which is exciting to hear. Um, on, on the other hand, I also just believe that even your best and brightest directors, they thrive in an, an area when they understand why they're doing what they're doing. So I, I, I believe that I am a great conduit between council and staff to be able to uh, communicate those things and execute them. The same goes for the public. I believe that the city manager should be um, very much um, involved with the public. I think that having a pulse on what the overall city's desires are is extremely important because I believe that it allows the city manager to then uh, communicate better with the public too, when they're communicating the direction of council, what council is looking to um, accomplish. And I believe that, that, that the city manager on, and the details of how, and, and I think that, that they can actually be very supportive of the council in that space with the community. Um, the city, that piece, a- a- as you know, is extremely easy for me. Um, Boulder City, eh, you know, I, I love the city. My family loves the city. And oftentimes up until now, over the course of years, we've attended, we've been plugged in with the city um, activities and even just talking with uh, the locals downtown, this small business owners, uh, i- is a very natural uh, place for me. So you, fulfilling that need of the city manager is extremely easy for me as well. So um, overall, just to sum it up, um, yes, the, the city, the city manager is the how, the council is the what, and the city, you know, how we go about implementing council's direction. And staff and, staff and the community tie that all together. Because on one hand, on one side of the, the paradigm, you've got the staff that's actually going to uh, make the council successful in implementing their desires. And then the community is going to be reflected on that to see what we're being implemented is what the council has heard the community wants. So you can't have one piece without the other. Um, and with that said, I, you know, serving in that capacity uh, would be something that I know that I could do very, very well for the city, and I, I believe that it would be a great partnership with the council.
Tell us your experience dealing with controversial issues and how you would work to provide accurate information to the community while still respecting those who have expressed legitimate concern?
You know, I, when, especially in years past and in agencies that I have worked with, um, a lot of times, finance gets put right in the middle of that. And uh, to be able to um, one, have that level of the, the, this city manager, the council having confidence in the accuracy of information being provided is critical when you are approaching any situation, finance related or not, having the accurate information is critical. Um, so when difficult issues come up, uh, my, my approach is to get all of, all of the pieces of information uh, to really truly understand the information, understand the overall issues that are presented uh, so that we can um, go, look at it as, as far as what the resolution is going to be. Um, you know, there, there's no shortage of issues when it comes to finances. Uh, we've been presented with them in the past. Um, however, I have had some very specific, uh, you know, interesting experience. Um, I, when I worked for the uh, County of San Bernardino, I did work for the, the County Board of Supervisors. And one of the primary um, roles that I had was policy advisement. Um, and we had some, you know, it was at a turning point years ago when the first economic crisis had, had occurred. And we were looking at the city's, the county's responsibility with respect to development that was just booming at the time. Um, and then on the other side where we had developers that were really, um, you know, i- it, they were making a lot of money because of developments that were going on and the city was, or the county, I apologize, and, and in turn was looking to have to pick up the uh, infrastructure costs. So um, you know, tho- those, those situations and bringing everybody together and being part of the conversation and we, you know, that's, that was the first uh, piece that the county saw of the implementation of development impact fees and what that looked like for the county, that fair share costing. Um, and you definitely had an opposition on both sides. Um, and it took, it took some time. It was, that was a big undertaking for the county. It took some time, but we definitely got there. And so there, there have definitely been, and I mean, that, that's one example, but there's definitely been instances just even in operations where I was assigned to departments to really take a look and try to understand what was going on with operations and sensitive issues had arisen that um, I was either asked to overlook. And because of my integrity, I was not able to, and we were able to correct some severe, not just financial, but organizational deficiencies and reorganize some departments um, to then make them, so that they were not actually having an operational deficit. So I have quite a bit of experience when we're, you're looking at difficult situations where um, both sides, there are two sides to it and trying to bring them together in the middle and, and resolve some of those issues, whether it be finance, policy, um, or, or organizational or operational issues. I also have just found that in the capacity of uh, director over the last, um, over five years now, um, I've, I've been consistently somebody that the city manager, general manager, or even I've had close relationships with all of my boards and councils as well, where um, I would always be brought in to discuss difficult situations and, and get my input. Um, so I, I believe that that would continue with the city of Boulder City. I believe that I could be a true asset and I've got so much experience um, in so many different areas, and it's not just limited to one city size or program, that it could be beneficial uh, as we move forward and different i- items are brought to um, the council for consideration.
How do you handle conflict between team members or between team members and council members?
You know, the, um, what I have found is um, you know, it, at the very, if you take a step back, the very first step is establishing those relationships on both sides. It would have an understanding with council, uh, with team members, the uh, you know, department heads, um, that, and I've always had the reputation of being very fair. So when there are any issues come up, I hear both sides. Um, and I al- also believe that it's very fair and, and believe that in order for team members to move forward, it's something that they also need to discuss together as well. So um, you know, having, having those relationships, being able to communicate and understand the individual situations, and then being able to bring the team members together to resolve the issue is, in my opinion, the absolute best approach. Um, if it's handled separately, there very well could be animosity or lack of clarity as to if things were actually resolved. So I do believe that that's the, one of the best ways to handle team member issues. With respect to council, the, the approach is the same. Understanding what council's uh, needs and desires are, the concern, how it arose, just the details of the situation are extremely important. Um, and then as well as, you know, providing that direction to staff, uh, correcting it in the short term and then making sure that there are things that are put into place to ensure that those things do not recur in the future. So I believe that uh, it's not just a, a one-time shot to resolve an issue. These are things and, and changes that we need to um, best practices, so to speak. I- i- is one of the best ways to avoid these types of issues, but put some uh, best practices or policies into place to make sure that it's not an ongoing issue as well.
How would you work with the public if they had complaints with city employees or council members?
Yeah, um, it, it's actually a very natural place for me to be uh, working with the public. Um, obviously, when it, you know, the finance department, overall, we, we are ones that are collecting and possibly billing. Um, so we definitely have our fair share of uh, customer inquiries, um, and complaints. And I actually take a lot of pride in being able to serve the customers. And where, in, in, in instance, may have started with a bad opinion um, of the situation, to be able to turn it around where the individual is very happy and actually have had many instances where uh, the public have then turned around and been very complimentary and made it, uh, the fact that yet they made it known that they were not only ta- taken care of, but they also felt that um, either myself or my staff had gone, gone above and beyond in order to take care of them. So um, that piece is not an issue for me. I believe that the um, communication. I, I'm, I'm not at the city manager, finance director, never at a level where it's un-reachable or uh, for, for the public. I've always invited that throughout the course of my career. And I believe that that's why I've earned my reputation of integrity. It's through my transparency and ability to communicate. I've always invited the public in if they've had any questions with respect to um, items that I presented, or if they just want to learn more. Um, so that's all, I, I've always just really appreciated that, even bringing some of the directors along with respect and empowering them to be better directors through uh, finance and understanding finance budget uh, and, and reporting out those um, actuals and what have you. I've taken great pride in, because I'm not, I don't see myself as just a, uh, customers are just the residents or just the council. I also believe that cus- my customers are well are the, is the city staff. So taking care of the city staff is extremely important as well. So when issues come up, I definitely have the open door. I would make it a point to make time and ensure that we're discussing um, items because those individuals in the, in the public are the ones that are also going to turn around and be your biggest supporters. Um, and I would love to be that conduit where if there's a misunderstanding or complaints about council, where I can bridge that gap and make any detractor of council be a supporter of council. And I do have a strong track record of being able to communicate necessary information in order to uh, change those uh, opinions, so to speak, um, through just information and, and giving facts and the ability to communicate it. So um, I believe that that contact is, is necessary, that communication with council that they, and, and anything that comes across my desk, I, I truly just believe that the council should be made aware of. So it's nothing as well that I would, um, whether, if a complaint came in about council, whether it be from staff or the public, those are all things that I just believe the council should be made aware of. Um, and so that we can all collectively work through them and present, prevent them from happening in the pa- in the future in, in situations to come. So um, I, I don't, I believe that that's an area that uh, comes very naturally to me and I, I actually enjoy doing it.
Communication is key for keeping council members informed. How would you keep council members informed on issues facing the community?
Well, the amazing thing the, these days is that the technology that's before us. It's um, I, I have used uh, many different mediums in order to communicate to coun- council. Um, I personally love face-to-face. I know that the pandemic right now is not necessarily the ideal situation, but I believe that those relationships are crucial in order for the city and the council to be successful. So um, you know, face-to-face meetings, I really support, whether they be weekly, bi-weekly with council members. I also believe that um, and depending on the, the desires of council, what their, what their levels and comfort levels are with the different types of communication mediums. I've got council members now that we text regularly throughout the week. Um, and we're just kinda, we're just keeping in contact and letting them know items that are going on. Others prefer emails, which is absolutely fine. Um, so I, I believe that, and summaries at the end of the week, the last two cities that I worked with, uh, all of the directors collectively put together a um, city manager weekly. And I think it's a, an awesome tool to communicate just the, the weekly ongoing items that council may or may not be aware of, and just really keep some abreast of what's going on internally within the city. Um, and that weekly is also made available to the public. So I think it's a great tool to use in order to communicate things that are going on that we may not think to communicate on a regular basis. Um, so I think all of those are great ways. But I also appreciate the fact that um, equal my current position and my previous positions, council members would just swing by my office and I, we would have a conversation uh, about things. And that, that's one of those, the most valuable times in my opinion, the things that come up. Um, because we, we are all so busy, that, that's a, that's a great time to not even, not just connect, to establish that relationship, but I also think it's a great time to communicate information and get a pulse. But I also think it's a great time to communicate information and get a pulse on what the council's opinions are of different things going on. So this couldn't be a better time with respect to communication. There's no excuse whatsoever for communication, not, and information not being shared for council, because there are so many available mediums to do so. I also think it's important, though, that the city manager manage and know how to direct staff to also be that communication medium to council if council is open to it. I think that that's a great relationship for council to have with directors. And, you know, really truly understanding the ins and outs of every operation. So communication this day and age, it should be, it should be a real easy thing. So, and, and I've, I've been a part of that and facilitated that in all of the positions that I, that I've held and have done it well.
Sound fiscal management is a high priority for the city. Explain your experience developing budgets, including the size, and how you ensure expenditures stay within those budgets, including capital projects.
Obviously, as a finance director, that's probably one area that's extremely natural to me. I've been doing finance for quite some time and I'm very good at it. And I think that's why I've also had the opportunity to not just be pigeonholed, so to speak, in finance. I've been pulled out of that capacity and have broadened responsibilities that have really, you know, brought me here today to be a good fit for Boulder City. I have managed budgets for well over the last fifteen years and have been responsible for the development, not just of the, the figures and the review, but the books themselves. I have had budgets up, you know, north of three million and then some as small as twenty-four million dollars. And so to me, that, that's a very easy thing. With respect to fiscal sustainability and management, and I would just like to make two points with respect to budget. Not only have my budgets always been on time, they've always, always been thorough. And honestly, one, one frustrating thing to me is the delivery of my budgets. I do, I have done, I do personally. And at the end of the day, I would get frustrated because council didn't have any questions for me. Because I was always so prepared and knew my information so well. I wanted questions. I wanted a discussion about budget to demonstrate and increase the confidence level. But that confidence level is something that I builds up over time. So, which has, you know, led me to the, the place where budgets are not a controversial issue. The council is never surprised. They know what to expect. In every agency I've worked with, I've also implemented quarterly reporting. I think it's extremely important that the council not just see the budget at budget time, that they see it quarterly. And, and not just actuals, but that they can see where we're headed and what that forecast looks like. But it doesn't stop there. I believe too that, you know, I've had monthly reporting with departments, which is internal. It's not, that's not anything that we necessarily report out publicly, so to speak. But it's just keeping that pulse on operations and understanding the highs and lows. So when we get to the year end, there should be no surprises at the department level. There should be no surprises for the finance director, city manager, or council, because everything is extremely clear. The other piece of it, I believe, is the fiscal sustainability is huge. And I have been very successful in that space with respect to analyzing where an agency is at. And being able to make some small changes in instances that make a big difference down the line, as well as big changes that impact things immediately. Every agent, even just starting with the fire district that I worked with, I was able to model a twenty-year model to, to figure out exactly what type of special tax we would need to ensure the fiscal sustainability of the fire protection district into the future and beyond. And not only because the way that we were able to present, present that information, that tax, which was, which, which is a big deal, it passed by seventy-eight percent of the constituency when it, when they voted. And in the year that that was approved, which was two thousand and sixteen, that was a huge feat, because taxes were not popular at that point in time. So at the end of the day, that particular fire protection district may be the only independent fire protection district left because the financial sustainability of it is secured. And the cities that I have worked with, as well as the water and sewer district, the unfunded liability for pensions in California is a huge issue. It's a hot issue. The expense on those would sometimes double. And they've tripled even over the course of time and have been a huge financial burden on agencies and their ability to provide services on a go-forward basis. I have had the opportunity to restructure some debt, refinance some debt, save these, say, my current city, we saved them fourteen point three million dollars in refinancing that unfunded liability. And that's over a twenty-five-year term. It's a process that I had started in the city of Rialto when they're looking to save about forty million dollars with the refinancing, with the restructuring of, of their debt. So fiscal sustainability, and it's not just about saving those dollars in a sense, it's also looking forward. So that five-year, ten-year forecast is extremely important. So council understands the decisions that are, that they are making currently, not just what the impact is in the current year, but what it looks like on a go-forward basis. Because just because it's manageable in one year, it could be a complete problem for council in out years. So forecasting is also a piece that's extremely important. The other things I think are just some policies that are put in place. I believe that getting councils' approval and support on policies is crucial in order for fiscal sustainability to be actually something that materializes. Currently in the city of Placentia was able to increase the, the reserve percent to twenty-five percent from seventeen. And you have to understand, this is a city that had forty-six dollars in their fund reserves a mere three years ago. And now we're looking at possibly be, making that twenty-five percent mark in, in the very near future. So fiscal sustainability finance is something that's very near and dear to my heart. And quite frankly, I don't see how you can have a city manager that doesn't have that strong background. It's, it's great to have strong staff, but I do believe that the city manager, it's one of those important things. You, you cannot do anything without finance. Finance is a component of everything that the council looks to do. And without fully understanding it and being able to be creative with it, it would be very difficult for a city manager to be successful. And I believe that somebody with that strong background would serve the, the council best.
How do you prioritize and stay organized?
As you can imagine, well, I, just to kind of give you a little bit of background as to what my last year has looked like, upon starting with the city of Placentia. I started, day two, I delivered the budget. And I had actually come in and started working with them before my actual start date in preparation for that, so that the, the finance director could be a part of that process, although I wasn't there for the entire budget process. Closed out a fiscal year, issued an audit, refinanced some debt, actually two debt issuances. And then started the, the, the next budget process. So it's been, it's kind of been a whirlwind and all of, most of that took place in the first seven to eight months of my employment with the city of Placentia. So I'm not, I, I am definitely not inexperienced when it comes to having a lot on your plate, so to speak. And I, I think there's a, there's a definite balance thing. I, I am a list person. I like plotting. I'm also a great project manager. I like plotting things out, understanding due dates, so I can best prioritize things that are coming up. It's also important, though, too, to understand the priorities of the council to make sure that I'm appropriately prioritizing the projects that are before me. And delegation is key. And, you know, one of the questions you asked earlier, Ms. McKee, was what's something that you have learned and made you a better manager? I have, I really, I take such pride in my work and what I present to council, what I present to the community, to, that I like to be involved. And as my responsibilities have grown over the year, I've also had to really look at how I delegate information. But not just delegate, but it also means that ensuring that the work that is being performed is also to the same standard. That, so working and empowering my staff by communicating what that should look like. Delegation is huge with respect to success in any type of organization, but especially with the city manager, because you have a hundred and one things coming at you from different directions. So it all, in my, it all starts with the list and then it ends up plotted out. And then it also ends up pooling in resources in order to accomplish those items that we need to accomplish in the time that we're requested to do so.
If you were selected, tell us what you would tackle during the first ninety days in the position and why?
You know, this was, this, this was something I, I have actually thought about quite a bit. And I think there's something to be said. I, I kind of had keyed on it a little bit earlier in the interview. But those, those first thirty days, actually, in my opinion, are extremely important. That's, that's when I would, I would look to meet with each of the council members and begin to get that pulse, start building those relationships, prioritizing, finding out what their most important priorities are. And then staff is the next key. I, I need to be sure that, begin to establish those relationships with all of the, the directors, understanding what their priorities are and key projects that they're working on. And then really looking at the two, between council priorities and director priorities, making sure that they're aligned, that they're actually on the right path. But those foundational relationships are extremely important. Establishing the modes of communication, that's the other thing, is understand, setting the, the initial expectation of what my desire, what my, what I would like to, what I would like to accomplish, the things that I'd like to be involved in or be made aware of. I'd also like, you know, meeting all staff. And so that may look like, I'd like to visit all the, all of the facilities, understand the facilities. I'm pretty familiar with Boulder City. I'm pretty familiar with your facilities. But there's something to be said about going out and being able to visualize and, and actually add to the, the total vision and, and what Boulder City truly looks like. And then what I would then do is start working on not, in, you know, the next thirty days, continue on what we've established in the first thirty days. But then really honing in on and prioritizing what, what are, what our first steps are? What are, what are the projects that we're looking to move forward? Things that maybe council has been concerned about. And I'm sure based upon the meeting last night, as well as other conversations and conversations I'm even having in my existing city are, what are we doing with the American Rescue Plan dollars? What is the plan there? How are we going to be helping our cities, our businesses? And in some instances, cities that are around me that are desperately needing the funding just to keep the city's doors open. So I believe that would also really play into that first sixty to ninety days with the city. Because those, those revenues should be coming in within the next month and a half or so for Boulder City. So I believe that that would definitely be something that we're looking at first as well, as well as the beginning of the fiscal year. So we're, you know, we're starting fresh July first and it's a, you know, it's a good way to start in having those priorities clarified. And that would definitely be the goal of it, to make sure that I have a clear path, a clear direction to begin with as we start a new fiscal year and as I would be onboarded to the city.
What is your understanding of the controlled growth policies of Boulder City? And what charter provisions, ordinances, or citizen initiatives are involved?
The slow growth is actually, is a pretty dynamic policy. And I am actually very impressed that years ago, decades ago, the city had the foresight to know what they wanted to look like in the future. So to play, to put the slow growth, you know, to put that ordinance in place and to control how much growth took place on an annual basis is pretty impressive. And I can say that in contrast to some cities here in the state of California, where those items, those types of things were not put in place. And, you know, the development impact fees that I had mentioned previously that came into play is because you had all this development take place. And then you're, the city, the agency is looking back, like, you know, what happened? Now we've got all of this, this level of responsibility and we don't know what to do with it. We can't afford it. We can't do improvements, maintenance. A lot of areas, there's a couple of communities in the high desert here that all have dirt roads because this development took so play, so quickly that the cities or the counties could not maintain all the roads. So I, I believe it was one that was a huge foresight and, and a good place. Because, you know, comparatively speaking, when I look at Boulder City and the financial state that it is in, on a per capita basis, it, it is a fiscally secure city. And especially compared to some of the California cities out here. And it's very impressive. And looking back, I one hundred percent believe that it has everything to do with that slow growth policy that was put into place. I believe that that policy really lended to the city a very secure future. So I even went so far as the acreage in the land that was purchased to prevent the urban sprawl from Henderson. Just impressive. I mean, it's one thing to put an ordinance in place, this is, this is as much as we're going to do. But they took another step and they, you know, purchased land to prevent any type of growth coming in that they could not control. And I, I tip my hat off to the city and the council for having done that years ago. I personally, I, one of the reasons why I can, I support the slow growth. I mean, that's one of the, this is a, you know, this is a personal note for me. I love the city of Boulder City. I love everything that it, that it stands for. I come from a small city myself, Grand Terrace, California. It's a small community. I, I call it Mayberry of Southern California. There's only sixteen thousand residents here in the city as well. Actually, I take that back. I think there's only twelve thousand residents here in the city of Grand Terrace. And it's been, it's something that I, I love for my family. And I, I love it personally. I love that community connection. So I believe that that slow growth ordinance was extremely important. And important enough too, it's obviously, it's part of, it's not just an ordinance that was put in play years ago. It's something that's part of your strategic plan. And it's something that's, it's continually monitored. So it's not just something that was approved by council and then forgotten. It's, it's something that, from what I can witness, the, the city and the council, the citizens as well. You know, a lot of times I've heard from multiple, that that's why we love Boulder City. That's why we're here in Boulder City. And I share that sentiment about Boulder City itself.
What would your vision of Boulder City be in five or ten years?
Well, I, I think that the first thing that comes to mind for me is that you, just on a personal, just to be able to call it home. That would be a huge blessing for my family and I. But Boulder City, I, you know, the, the council, the community involvement currently has laid a really strong foundation to be able to continue that in the future. I see, you know, the visual that I have for Boulder City is like heightened community involvement. That especially as we're moving out of COVID, that there is bringing the community more together, getting them, them more involved and participating in the things that really just mean the most. And I, I think that everybody can share the sentiment that we've missed that over the last year. So I really feel like Boulder City, you know, there, that there can be, you know, even more growth coming out of COVID and being able, this pandemic, and, and really being able to foster that small city feel with the community. And, and a lot of, you know, a lot of communities, a lot of cities in the state of California don't understand the concept of community. I can tell you, there's countless individuals that don't even know their next-door neighbors. And that is, that is not the visual that I have for Boulder City. I see Boulder City continuing. I think there's some, there's some smart growth. I think some of the things that have gone on with the lease of the solar, the solar farms have been amazing for the city, where you have actually created additional revenue streams without having to do the huge economic development that has an impact on the city. And that was extremely innovative. And another item that I tip my hat off to the city, because you were able to accomplish two things that usually are in, are in direct conflict. How do you increase revenues for a city but not increase residential, not increase other types of economic development? So it was, it was a great hand played by the city there. So I, I, I see that in five, ten years, that the city will continue with its slow growth and be very, very wise and smart about any type of development that takes place, that still being able to maintain that core of what Boulder City is all about. I see increased community involvement in activities. And I, from a fiscal standpoint, this, this city is in such a great position. And I see absolutely nothing that's going to hinder that in the future, especially if the slow growth ordinance is maintained and the council is, continues to be as wise as they have with respect to the overall growth of the city.
Nonprofit charities contribute significantly to this community. What efforts do you believe local government should engage in with nonprofit charities?
At the end of the day, you know, when you think of social services, social services- social services are something that are provided more at a county level. Every once in a while, you have cities that recognize the importance of nonprofits because they perform a function that cities typically cannot perform. So that partnership between nonprofits within a city are extremely critical. They're extremely important. They can be a very good conduit or lifeline to some of the most needs and needy constituents and citizens that we have. And they can provide a function, provide a service that the city isn't necessarily set up to do. But those partnerships can also be very, you know, the CDBG block grants is an excellent example of that, being able to support some of the community groups. But there's also some non-tangible ways that the city can support these nonprofits to be successful. Whether it be use of public facilities or something where there is a tangible or alignment of benefit to both the city and to the organization. So I believe that those relationships, those partnerships are a definite necessity. And I also believe those are the organizations as well that are a great conduit to ensure that, not only that the council has a good pulse on the citizens, but is also, they're also, they can turn and be one of the biggest supporters of the council and the city and what we're trying to achieve. So those individuals, that partnership, I believe it's critical. It's a crucial partnership, it can't be ignored. Cities that have ignored it have done so to their own detriment. I do see the city of Boulder, especially through the First Round of Care Act, there was a lot of partnership going on to really serve the residents. And I think that that's crucial, I think it's important. And I believe that Boulder City was spot on in partnering with those nonprofit groups in order to best serve the citizens.
What role does local government have in regard to business and economic development?
You know, it's, I've seen it many different ways. I've seen government just trying to control it and trying to control what that development looks like. But I've also, I also believe that government has a seat at the table. The government has to be party to the conversation. I think it's appropriate. And again, the example of having development impact fees, where you've got agencies that are stuck with infrastructure because they weren't part of that development conversation. So I believe that there's definitely a role that the government needs to play, the city needs to play. Because if the city has a vision, if the city has a plan as to where they want to be, development can change that. Development can make that look very differently in five, ten, twenty years. So to ensure that the vision of the city, of the citizens is maintained, there always has to be a balance in a conversation with respect to what type of development occurs, if it's appropriate for the city, does the citizenry support it? And can the city support it? So I believe it's a big conversation. And if done right, I think that there can be an excellent balance between economic development and the city being able to still maintain and achieve the vision and goals and objectives that they have set.
All right, Jessica, so we've asked you a lot of questions today. What questions do you have for council?
Well, I know it's a lot of information. And I guess the first question I have is if any clarity is needed by any of the council members with respect to my experience or abilities. If there's anything more that you'd like to know, I'd be more than happy to offer up that information.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, I appreciate your time today. Are there any questions from other members of council? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, hi, good morning. I have two questions for you. Your, it sounds funny, but your good idea is not supported by council or residents. How do you resolve that?
Well, if I had a good idea, and the mere fact that I came forward with a good idea and I was not aware that it wasn't supported by council and citizenship, that would never happen. I don't believe that, you know, I would come forward with a discussion or a suggestion because council is the one that's directing that. They are pointing us in the direction of where we want to go and ideas to go about it. So those types of, I fully vet things out before they, before we come to a point where, you know, it's something that's put especially publicly. It's definitely multiple conversations that take place before that actually happens. So that, in my opinion, my attempt would be not to let that happen to begin with. I would know what is supported by council, and what is supported by the citizens. But again, my main direction comes from council. So even if council's pointing me in a direction and you are the voice of the people, then that is the direction that the city manager needs to take.
Okay, and the other is, in terms of dealing with other governmental entities, what's your experience with respect to county, neighborhood, communities, the state, and so on?
Oh, Councilmember Bridges, I have a lot of experience there. When I worked for, it started when I worked for the County of San Bernardino. The County of San Bernardino and especially working for the Board of Supervisors. I was a representative for the Board of Supervisors, for the chairman on many different agencies, whether it be cities that were inside his district or if it was other organizations like the regional transportation organizations. Those were all, I was his conduit for those various agencies, as well as other legislative offices, whether it be senators or congressmen. Those were offices that I dealt with, so very natural space for me. With respect to my city experience, of course, I stay very much plugged in. I really truly believe that a strong network of resources is extremely important. I actually have a network in Clark County, Nevada, in the Southern Nevada region. I have established some with Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, as well as Henderson. Because the ultimate goal was eventually to get out to Boulder City. So I had started that a time back in order to prepare for that. But I've always had really good, strong relationships currently with the city of Placentia. One of the first things I did was reach out to my neighboring cities because I knew that they would be facing different issues that I was in another county when I worked in San Bernardino County. So that was one of the first things I did was establish that resource and that network. I also have a very strong relationship with the various agencies within Orange County. And that's exactly what I would love to do. That, you know, you want to talk about the thirty to sixty, ninety days. Those relationships and those resources internally between council and staff are extremely important. But they're also important to understand the region and to make sure that my learning curve would be as small as possible. It's establishing those resources so I know whose door to knock on when things were pulled, when things came up. I also serve and sit on many, represent the city on very different, various committees. We are in partnership currently, the city of Placentia is in partnership with thirteen other cities for homeless shelter that was just opened up last year. So I speak, I'm very much involved with the other city, participating cities, especially from a financing standpoint. So that's something that's very natural. I believe that those are extremely important. And I wouldn't recommend this type of job or even a finance director without having that type of connections and without establishing those.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hoskin?
Thank you so very much, and thank you for this interview. Are you a micromanager? Or do you expect staff to resolve the issues before advising you that there was an issue?
I'm not a micromanager at all. I believe in empowering and developing. I would not go in and empower staff that weren't capable. I think that it's important to know their limits. But I also believe in empowering them and also getting them the resources they need to ensure that they are producing and doing the best job possible. I don't believe that at the city manager level, and quite frankly, not at the finance director level, that you can be effective, that I could do my job if I was a micromanager. So I believe delegation is extremely important. I believe in surrounding my people, surrounding myself with people that are more intelligent than me. They make my job easier. At the same time, I'm learning from them and I'm becoming a better manager. So I think it's extremely important that you have a strong staff. But I also think it's important that you let them do their job because you get the best work when you support them and when you believe in them and when you go to bat for them. I believe that your staff are going to perform for you every time and they will be there every time for you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Councilmember Folden?
Thank you, good morning. I just wanted to give the opportunity, do you have anything that may come up in your background check that you would like to address head on?
Not at all. In fact, it's kind of funny, I've had background investigators tell me I need to get a life. I guess there's just nothing there.
All right, well, again, Ms. Brown, I really do appreciate your time today. Clearly, interviews like this are, can be stressful. I appreciate your forthrightness with your answers. Any other items before we begin our completion of the evaluation forms for Ms. Brown? All right, well, again, Ms. Brown, thank you very much for your time today. Very much appreciated. Okay, again, Ms. Brown, if you're still on the line, apologize for the audio problems we just had there. But again, very much appreciate your time today. And thank you again for your forthrightness with your questions, or answers to our questions. And with that, we will then take a recess to allow us to complete these evaluations. I guess we're doing fifteen-minute recess. So we will come back into session at eleven forty. Thank you. Again, we'll call the meeting back to order. We are on to our second candidate now, Mr. Edward Dickey, Ms. McKee.
Good morning, Ed.
Good morning, you guys hear me okay?
We, we can't hear you very well.
How about that, if I get a little closer?
That's perfect.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, probably closer is good.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so we've got some questions we'll go through and then we'll give you a chance to ask some questions of council.
Sure.
So first getting started, Ed, let's, tell me, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the city manager position in Boulder City at this point in your career.
Absolutely. I've had a very fortunate career in city management. I actually didn't start until I was about forty. But I've been in government, I've been a planner, a GIS manager, and I've done other things within municipalities and with a county, up in Utah County. And I just, one day, working with city councils, commissioners, other city managers and county managers, I just said to myself, that's what I want to do. I want to be able to be more involved, be able to make decisions. So I went back to school and got my master's degree and the rest is kind of history. And I've enjoyed every minute of it, I love it. I did work in Mesquite for a little while and ever since I lived there, I always wanted to come back to Nevada, finish my retirement, of course, to get vested. But also, if I was to go anywhere, it would have been Boulder. And I've watched it, ever since then, I've kept my eye out for Boulder. And a couple of times it came open, I didn't apply, I just didn't think I was in a situation where it made sense for me. I wanted to get more experience and I just felt this was the time to be able to come back and be closer to my family. I have a lot more experience with what I've done and I just think I'd be a great fit for it. I've had a lot of opportunity to help different cities, help them with their budgets, come in and help do organizational structure, strategic plans, helping them to build different facilities. And I've learned so much, I just enjoy it. The two things, but with you guys that you need, that I'm really interested in is the airport and the solar farms that you ran out and leased. And I can't believe thirty percent of your revenue comes from the solar farm, that's pretty impressive. But I, that, I'd just be upfront with you, those are the two things that I don't have a whole lot of experience in, that'd be new to me. But I've been with full-service cities with power and streets, water, everything like that, except for those two things. But anyway, that's basically me, I'm really good at working with others, getting staff to be on the same page, building a high-performing team. I've come up with development plans, development goals that help with getting them that way. And even doing a PPI, which is a personal progress interview, a system kind of thing where we meet with them and go over their goals, make sure they're on track. I just, my whole philosophy is, I want Peter Paul to be successful and I want to do everything I can to help them be successful. I'm there to give them the autonomy, do their job, they're the professionals in what they're doing. I understand that, so I basically trust them from day one until they show me that I can't. And then I hold myself accountable, I ask them to hold myself accountable, and I hold them accountable. That's a little bit about me. This position, you guys have no idea how much I would love to work with you guys. I believe in transparency. Everywhere I've gone, I've been able to become, well, make the position a little more transparent. I know the importance of working with the council, keeping everybody informed so they're never caught off guard or ever surprised. And they've always appreciated that. And my council at this time, my current council, you're welcome, you know, any of them, I know I put a couple, the mayor and one of the council members on as reference, but you're welcome to call any of them. They all kind of know that I'm moving back to be closer to my family, so that's, that'd be okay if you wanted to call them.
As city manager, how would you describe your management style? And how would your coworkers describe you?
I think, and that's one thing, I get a lot of feedback because I do like to talk to them and ask them, is there anything I can do better? Do you like how I treat you? But first and foremost, when I sit down with them, firstly, I tell them that I do trust you from day one until you show me that I can. And I like to talk about what their goals are. And then I like to kind of look at what the strategic plan for the city is and how their goals line up with that. I'm really, I don't micromanage at all. I give them the autonomy, do their job, I respect that. And I'm there to help them when they need the help. And I've had a lot of different directors, police chiefs, fire chiefs, public work structures, and I always come back and say how much they've appreciated that. And it always, they all said, it made me from day one not want to let you down. To, it was like they were given a new beginning or a new, you know, that they didn't have to prove anything, they just, but they wanted to. It's like they weren't being held accountable, but they just wanted to show me that I can trust them. And then that just, it just, it just filtered down through everyone and it helped all of us to collaborate and work closer together. I've been into cities where they did not want to share their budget or talk about the budget with each other. And we got them to where we would look at it and, like my police chief would say, hey, you know, to the parks director, I know you need that piece of equipment, I can hold off a year with this if you need the money. And it's especially during the recession, when we really had to look at our funds and what we needed to do. I got them all talking, or before they would not. So that's one of the things, I think, one of my strengths, is getting everybody on the same page and feeling good about the organization. Sunday night, being excited to go to work the next day, to get things done and do what they need to do.
During difficult periods of transition, how would you address issues of staff morale or build a strong team?
Like I said, the, first and foremost, they need to understand where I come from. And that I'm there to help them be successful. I'm there to treat them all fairly as equals, you know, to treat, treat everyone the same, let them all get the same information, know that my door's open. I like to have an open door. I've had people in the community always express their gratitude that I would listen to them. A lot of people need to just be listened to. One of the things that I always like to implement everywhere I go is a development plan for the individuals and for each department. And that's something you work on it to become a higher performing team, individually and department-wise. And I always tie those in with a strategic plan and the wishes of the council. But they, I, I just, you know, all my references, every city I've been, you're welcome to call anyone and just ask them how they felt I was as a manager and how I led them and how I got everybody to kind of be on the same page and enjoy their job. And really to do a good job. Now, there's times, you know, not everything's perfect and you have to hold people accountable. But I always see that as myself, that I'm not successful if I can't get someone to be successful. But there's times when there's, there comes a point when someone needs to go and you made, you need to make that decision for the city, what's best for the city. And those aren't easy decisions, but if I can do anything I can to keep someone, keep them on board, let them understand that we're there as public servants, we work for the council, we work for the residents, we're there to provide a service and do the best we can. We don't have to be the best buddies, but we need to respect each other and do what we can to, to provide a better service to the residents.
Do you believe you have management weaknesses? And if so, what have you done to improve yourself for the city manager position in the last twenty-four months?
I, I think everybody does have weaknesses. It's hard to point them out and say, this is my weakness, because a lot of weaknesses, you, I, I feel like build on your strengths. I know a lot of people says you want to work on your weakness and make that a strength. Sometimes, and that's, and that's good to recognize that weakness and just try to avoid that weakness, but build on the strengths that you have. My weaknesses sometimes might be that maybe I'm a little too with some personalities, maybe I'm a little too you know, like, like an old-time fire chief, maybe, or something, might just say, oh, this young guy coming in. What, what's he going to show me? Until they get to know me, so at first, maybe I just come across as a little bit like I'm going to be a pushover or something, and then once they get to know me and say, hey, this guy will hold me accountable. That would be, I think that was my weakness when I first got into city management, because I was a little unsure of myself. It was new when I first. I just relied on my talents and my management skills, my leadership skills, but at the same time, I was a little unsure when I went to my first city in North Ogden. So I was tested a little bit, but from that, I think I gained a lot of respect from the police chief, the fire chief, they'd been there a while, when they saw that I'm there just to help them, I'm not there to tell them what to do and get in their way, but I'm there to hold them accountable. And they respected me when I, when I was able to bring up things and hold them and call them on certain things that they had that were going on, like in the budget, that was always happening. Just because it always happened doesn't mean it has to keep happening. We always did it this way, or we always did that this way. And it doesn't, it doesn't matter how we always did it. My, my philosophy is always look to what's best for the town and the city, under the direction of the council, of course.
How do you see the city manager's role in relation to the city council, city staff, Boulder City residents, and other governmental entities? And who do, who do you believe you should put for, support first, the staff, the council, or the public?
Well, I work for the council, which works for the public, so, and you know, we, we all work for the public. We're there to make their lives better. And I understand that, providing a great service. I, I see myself as the middle guy, that I, I want to make it so council feels comfortable with me. They trust me, they know that I'm going to take what they want, what they vote on, what they would like, the direction they want to go, and I'm going to implement that. And I'm going to convey that to the rest of the staff, and I'm going to do it in a way that gets them excited to want to accomplish the certain, the things that the council wants to do. I stay, the, the biggest thing I've done, and I've always got compliments for, and it just makes sense to me, and I'm sure all the other candidates feel the same, is to always keep the council informed and never go outside and start just keeping one or two informed. My, I want council to know right now that you would all get the same updates, the same emails. I, you know, the only time it'd be one-on-one, sometimes with the mayor, because of the administrative type duties. If there's something specific that the council's decided, then we're working on a project. Yeah, that's a little different, but when I update and transparent, I just, the transparency and the communication's just going to be, I think council will, will really appreciate that. And I do the same with staff, so they don't have questions or that, they're not surprised either. I like to make, keep them informed. And then I like to convey from what happened in council meeting, what the council wants down to them. And help them to get the job done that they need to do, depending on what was directed from council. It's important. I think that's one of the most pivotal things, is just being there to help the council, get the information to councils so they can make the best decisions possible. And then always being someone they trust, they know that's there for them, for the people. There's no other reason to be there other than to work to provide those services for the people.
Tell us your experience dealing with controversial issues and how you would work to provide accurate information to the community while still respecting those who have expressed legitimate concerns.
Yeah, and I think that's very important. I have quite a few examples. One is just in North Ogden. We're building a community, a public works complex. And there was a council member that, and that's why I learned from this too, to make sure I keep all involved. There was one council member that didn't want to play ball with the others and they'd go out and, and have private meetings and different things with residents and just say things that really weren't accurate. And I fell into that as far as kind of picking sides and going with the rest of the council. That, you know, instead of realizing, and I, I learned a big lesson from this, that every council member's been voted. People voted for them, I need to respect them all and treat them all as the same and give them the same information. That's why I kind of talked about that earlier. With the public works complex, you just got to get the info, this all comes down to transparency. Have your meetings, your public meetings, have, i- i- if it doesn't require a public hearing, sometimes maybe it's a good idea to have one. Have, have, have two if one's required sometimes. Do all you can to get the information out and then have clear, concise information. If it's brochures or whatever on your website, have daily updates. Do what you can to get the information out and then people can disseminate that and decide what they think. What they think is, is, you know, most appropriate. People can make a, a decision that way of what they, what they decide to do. I, I just think it's very important to, to always try to be forthright, upfront, transparent in everything that you do. Other times with, so there's public works complex that we did, there was a community center that we did. We're currently doing a parking lot here, a big addition to the town hall area, but everything like that, people just have, and, and everyone has their, their issues. Some don't like the zoning, some don't like this, some don't like that, and they, they, they find reasons to to question you about it. You just, you just got to be upfront and you got to be truthful and as honest as you can and as clear as you can.
How do you handle conflict between team members or between team members and council members?
I make them wrestle each other. I just, I, what I do is first of all, I, I let them know that we're there, we're there to provide a service, we're hire, we're employees, we're staff. And that we need to get things accomplished. And if we can't get them accomplished, we're, you know, why are we there? I, and like I said earlier, I, I like to remind them, we're there to serve the people. We're there to provide a service to the residents and to the council to get the best information we can possible so they can make those decisions that they need to make. And we need to do that as a team. We don't have to go out after and have a big barbecue and like each other. Sometimes maybe there'll be a staff little party like that, but you don't have to necessarily be best friends with someone, you just need to respect them and respect their job. I'm really big in, in building staff up so they respect one another, they enjoy working for one another, and they actually want each other to succeed. I, I've, one of my favorite things is when a department head comes in and says, hey, so-and-so in Parks, I just always had an issue with them, but since you've been here, you've kind of showed me, you know, that I haven't walked in his shoes, or that there, there's a lot he brings to the table that I appreciate. We see things differently, I do it this way, but I'm okay with that. It's just now I respect him. So I've, I've had a lot of that kind of feedback from department heads also. I think it's very important to work as a team.
How would you work with the public if they had a complaint about a city employee or a council member?
Well, first thing, I think it's important, and, and a lot of people just want to be listened to. And I understand that. And, and there's times, even they know that there's not a whole lot they can do, and I'm talking about a whole range of what they might be upset about or talking about. With this specific one, I think it's okay to listen to what they say, but I, I, that's a good question. As far as with council, I think after I hear them, I might want to, you know, just talk to the, probably with the mayor, if that's the protocol there. Just kind of say, hey, this is kind of what's come up. What, how do you want me to handle it? Damn, I mean, the mayor's voted in to be the mayor and, and kind of, you know, there to be the chair of the, of the council to maybe decide maybe what they should do, and then they can talk about it. Maybe it's in a, you know, in a closed meeting or whatever. It's not something that I would bring and tell anyone, I'd keep it confidential, even with an employee. Now, if an employee, it'd be a little bit different, they'd come to me and I can listen to them and see what there is. So, so I think, two, I'd handle it two different ways. Employee, I would handle it, and it depends on who the employee with as far as how much I would take the council and get their feedback too. It could be in a public, you know, I mean, in a closed meeting or something if it's personnel. And then if it's council, it, I definitely would want to run it by probably first with the mayor. If it's the mayor, I'd probably still sit down and talk to the mayor about it. Just depends on what they're, what they're talking about. Usually they'll say, don't, please don't tell anyone. And they just want to be listened to. And that, that's okay, you just listen to them and take it from there and kind of keep, kind of observe and see if there's any merit to it.
Communication is key for keeping council members informed. How would you keep council members informed on issues facing the community?
So I, I would like, what I've always done in the past, here, here they, it's a little different, but always give them an update, keep them updated. It could be a weekly update where I get updates from each department, they send it to me, I disseminate and come to summarize and put it in one. Like sometimes I even copy and paste what they send, so it's right from them. Some councils liked it every other week, some liked it monthly. And daily, if there's an event or something that might surprise them, like if they're out at dinner or somewhere and some, I would definitely just text or email all of them on the, on the fly. Text would be something, if it's something they need to know right now, I'd probably send that group text to all of them. Email, if it's something, hey, this happened, I just want you to keep an eye, this is what transpired today, you might be asked. This is kind of where we're at with it, and this is the information I have so far. I, I just, that's one of the worst things, is if there's something I know, I don't tell them and they find out and it wasn't by me. They find out later that day or the next day or, or whenever. So that, that's, I understand that and how important that is to keep them informed. And I would talk to each of them, what I would do, I'd, I'd sit down with each council member when I get there and kind of listen to them and see what their thoughts, concerns, their goals are for the town and and then tell them kind of about mine and how, how we can work together and kind of what I, you know, would expect from them and what they'd expect from me, but I'd like to know from the council how they would like that, text, email write-off, phone call even. You know, sometimes just call them all or, or call, you know, the mayor and, and ask them what, how they'd like me to send it. I, I just would want to get into that and see what, how they would like it, but first and foremost is make sure they're never surprised.
Sound fiscal management is a high priority for the city. Explain your experience developing budgets, including the size, and how you ensure expenditures stay within those budgets, including capital projects.
Okay, I, you know, so my first city manager job was up in North Ogden, so it's probably the closest in population. I think there's a little more there than in, in, in Boulder, but your, your budget's quite a bit bigger with what I had up there. And we were a full-service city. The budget was about fifteen, sixteen million. Total general fund was about five, maybe six. But, but doing that budget and other budgets, I, I'm, basically I oversee the budget. Thank goodness I have a finance manager. I've done a couple totally on my own. When I was here, the first year, just a little side note, I, I actually caught my finance officer stealing money. And, and that was right before the budget. So I let him go, and then I did the whole budget last year from start to finish without a finance manager, and it was fine. I mean, we're a smaller town, it, it just, but it was, I, I enjoyed it because I got to see a little bit of the side of a finance officer or director. So I've, I've seen it through from sitting down with the, with the council, first of all, see what their goals are, see what's out there, see what our long-term plans are. And then bring it together and then get with the staff, see what their, you know, the next fiscal year, what theirs are and what their upcoming projects might be, and we just kind of prioritize them, sit down in a work session or a budget session with council and go over priorities, go over the strategic plan, see where we're at, see where we want to be. See where council's comfortable with this or that, and if, if, you know, and and then also have justification if there's going to be a new staff member or going to be this, or or what your, you know, what the departments might want to do. But that's what happens with everybody on the same page and following the general plan, not the general plan, but a strategic plan or the goals of the town and the, and the town councils, city council, sorry.
How do you prioritize and stay organized?
Um, I like to have little ticklers that remind me of things, and I, I like to, I like to let, you know, secretary administrative assistant kind of keep, try to see my calendar so that I always have that second reminder of, of certain things. But I, I like to be organized by just, just keeping myself involved with, just every day, what's going on with other cities, the, the cogs, the whatever, and see what kind of, what's out there, what's coming up, and, and try to just be organized so I can go, maybe if there's some online training or something to help me to see what, what's there, what's new, what can the city take advantage of, like, like the new, you know, the, the, the COVID funding that all the towns are getting and how it can be spent and, and what we can do with it and stuff like that. I like to be up on that. But just really with, with outlook right now, and it, and it gives me on my phone, I have reminders. I put them in, I get like a little reminder twenty-four hour advance, and then I get like a fifteen minute advance, just different things like that. But just one of the big keys, and I think that's what you're asking about, is when there's statutory deadlines and stuff, I want to make sure that each department knows when their deadlines are for, to turn in any kind of financial reports or that to the state. I just want to make sure they've got something. And then I, I even have something to remind them, to just kind of make sure that we're all, we're not going to miss anything that needs to be done.
If you were selected, tell us what you would tackle during the first ninety days in the position and why.
I think first, I'd just like to sit down with the council, know what they want from me, what they expect from me. And kind of let them know a little bit what I expect. Just, as far as what I expect is just chain of command, make sure we're all on the same page with that. Same thing with the, with the staff, to sit down and meet with each one of them, the department heads, and maybe even their main supervisors. Get to know them a little bit. I'd want to get to know kind of the, really get into the budget, where things are. I know the project with the pool that's coming up, you got the, the vote coming up in June and stuff. Just kind of understand that. I'd probably sit in to, to some of the committees if it would be okay to kind of get myself brushed up. I think it'd be very busy. I don't even know I'd be able to take the Friday off. I, I just think I'd be very, very busy the first little while, trying to just soak it all in. Learn as much as I can and be as visible as I can. I'd like, I love getting out in the community, meeting stakeholders, businesses, just let them know, hey, I'm here. I'm available if you ever need to talk. If there's anything, just please give me a call and I can, I'll do what I can to, to listen and see if there's anything we can do to help you. There's a anything, just please give me a call and I can I'll do what I can to to listen and see if there's anything we can do to help you. Uh, same with residents. I I'd I'd hope that the council might have certain people that might be good for me to meet and talk to. I'd probably want to talk to the 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 cog or or uh state representative, even, you know, let them know that I'm there and if there's anything and just. Start just building, building up some uh. Just just building up the relationships, I think, is key. And then understanding kind of the city and what's going on. And if there's certain. Things that the council wants me to look into, I can start looking into them. And kind of see, you know, what 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 what. Might need to be done if anything and what I can do to help them. Oh, there's a lot. I could go on. Be very busy.
What is your understanding of the controlled growth policies in Boulder City and what charter provisions, ordinances, or citizen initiatives are involved?
Well, I know that you have very strict for for growth. Um, and that's one of the things I find unique about Boulder. There there's things I think a lot of people really like about Boulder, that being one. One being that there's no gambling and and the story, the historic uh. Whole aspect, history of Boulder, being from Hoover Dam, but I. I, you know, being a planner. I think that's very interesting that that and the citizens I know play a huge part in that. And this from just what I understand, and no, I haven't read through all of it yet, that that's also one of the things I'd want to do is just completely understand that that ordinance and and. Where where it's coming from and just so I understand when I get asked questions. But it's it's something that I think is. It was uh. When it was first put in place, I think it was a great thing because now you guys are kind of that special little unique. City be around the hill. There instead of being, it would all be, you you would be connected to Henry, it'd be one big. You'd be one big subdivision coming out, a big sprawl. So I think you've done a great job and I think everything that I see in it, I think is a good thing. Just to keep that identity and I know, I don't know if there's issues with the. Children that grow up there in building homes and wanting to stay there. I don't know if you guys run into that. I I know a lot of like in Southern Utah, a lot of the towns kind of are the same. They don't have the. The same policies, but they're having a hard time getting the kids to be able to afford to stay, so they usually have to move up north or go somewhere else. So I don't know if you have some of those issues where where the young families aren't able to. Build new homes or stay there. So that's, you know. So I just have to tell you, I think it's a great. Thing, but at the same time, it could limit maybe some things that maybe. The vitality of the town, but maybe you don't see that problem. And maybe I won't say it either if I was there and and got to know it a little bit better, but I that could be as a planner's perspective. I could see that, but I think if it's done right, the city owns a lot of land, like you guys are probably. Annexation wise or or the boundary, you're probably the biggest city in the state. So there there's always that potential if it's done right that you can provide certain kind of housing and get that in and. Anyway. I don't want to talk too much because I'm just going in a circle, so anyway.
What would your vision of Boulder City be in five or ten years?
I love what Boulder City is, so I I'd like to see it the same it is, but maybe with. The addition of the pool, you know, and ha- you know, whether it's uh you it's redone or. Or it's a whole brand new one, whatever the residents decide and whatever the funding's done for that would be kind of. Would be a nice amenity for the town, the golf courses you have. I I I think just all I think is maybe just a few more businesses. That represent the city and what they like, um, the same kind of people, keep the same, no gambling, um. Uh, I I'd keep the same ordinance for the development, uh. So probably just maybe grow, but not grow like it could if it really wanted. But enough just to keep that was small town. That's why people love it there and that's why they want to be there and that's why they want to stay there. But at the same time, you got to offer some opportunity for. The children and for some of the others and and maybe that's happening. I'll have to look at that. I'll probably read that after we're off and go, okay, they're doing just fine. It's not a problem.
Nonprofit charities contribute significantly to the community. What efforts do you believe local government should engage in with nonprofit charities?
Uh, as long as it's um. Causure and it's 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 legal, I I don't see any reason not to work with a nonprofit, I mean, with a profit. Uh, company and and uh non-private, private, whatever. I I've worked with a a lot in trying to build uh. Certain kind of partnerships, um, what we do, like where I'm at now, we we have a lot of uh. For-profit companies provide a lot of services for the towns. We have contracts with them. I think as much as you can to work as long as, you know, for the better of the the residents and for the town, you want to work with these people. You you want to do everything you can to work with people, um. Different organizations, if if, you know, if they're gonna. Make donations or whatever, you just got to make sure it's it's for the right reason and what it's for. There's no strings attached type of things. If there is anything, you know, if there's a reason for something, you just make sure you document it, it's transparent and and that goes back to the transparency. Make sure you're transparent in everything that you do. You want to be transparent. You want people to understand if you're getting this, this is what it's for. And it's being held in this account to help pay for this. If it's for the pool, it's being held, we haven't spent any of it, it's going to be spent for building the new pool. Or whatever, so.
What role does local government have in regard to business and economic development?
It can have a big role as far as the zoning, um. As far as making them successful, I, you know, I I most cities, they're all going to say, I'd be so successful if it wasn't for you guys. So a lot say that, then, but that, you know what, that that kind of pushes you into working with them and talking to them and just listening to what it is and and maybe it's. Just small things, um, to put up a different kind of sign or to do this, but. I think you want to work with your businesses as much as possible because they're the, there's what they're they're what makes the uh. The town thrive and that's why a lot of people even come into town is to use certain businesses or restaurants or whatever. So you want to do what you can, but a lot of it, you you know, you can't make people go. You can't make things happen, but you can at least provide. And be as business friendly as you can in the way that you still get what you want out of it, which is, you know, through through uh the zoning or codes and and everything. But. And there may be certain kind of business that that you want to attract and certain kind that maybe you you you're not real excited to attract to keep that small town feel. So it just really, you you look at your code, you look at the uh. The master plan and everything and just kind of, you know, what what in here are we doing wrong? If we want to attract more of this and less of that. But still, you got to make sure that, you know, attorney looks it over and it's it's legal what you do. You don't want to, you know. Do 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 things that you that really limit someone's, you know, you you want to make sure everybody has the opportunity. But I think it's really important that you just um. You share with the businesses that you're there for them, you understand their role, they play an important role, listen to them. And see if there are things that you can do to help them with their business. And it it could be signage, it could be just different zone, maybe it makes sense to rezone something. A different way, maybe the commercial zone could extend just a little bit here and it's okay, it fits within the general plan. To make things like that happen, maybe a speed limit can be reduced just a little bit in in a certain area, so like. You know, so that's a big deal to a lot of them, depending on how fast traffic's going, there's things like that.
So we've asked you a lot of questions today. What questions do you have for council?
First, I want to thank you guys for this opportunity, obviously. I mean, what a great opportunity. I've never had the opportunity in an open meeting to have an interview, so. This has been a first. It it's been very uh. Yeah, I I I I've been nervous, but it's it's been good and I appreciate it. I appreciate having the time to talk to y'all. About I I just wanted to say a couple of things, um. I I could start as early as May, the first of May, just because I I've let them know here that I I need to move back um closer to be. Closer to my boy and and my daughter that are a little younger. And um. Another thing, my my salary that I said on the on the uh application. I'd be okay for it to be a little bit lower. I've looked at things and considered it a little bit more. I I'd really like the opportunity, so if that is, if that's a question, I I'd be fine with coming down. Between one forty, one forty-five, somewhere in that range from what I put on my application, which was a little bit more than that. With you guys, I I wish I could just talk to all of you and ask you. What what? Wha- wha- what is it you love most about the town? And that's something I can ask you if if I get the position. But right now, I I'd just like to know what your timeframe from here is, um. If you do want me to come back again, I don't know what you're planning on from this, if you're if you're doing in-house with two or three people. I I just don't know kind of where you're at at this time. That's one question.
So Ed, right now the process is we're interviewing candidates today and then council will take the time to decide. If they want to bring some candidates in and we don't know what that number would be, but maybe two or three, so that's that's kind of the process now.
Okay, and that makes sense, so so I thought that. Second thing, I wish I wasn't in the swivel chair because I I just noticed I've caught myself kind of swiveling. Instead of a chair, I could just sit straight. That was probably annoying on your guys' end. Yeah, so the the other question. I had is is uh. I I know that um. The the town, it's been about. I mean, are there plans, when when this? Is is the town looking to to do the the pool? To do a a new, like to build a new pool, or are they looking at just kind of updating the existing pool? And the reason I'm asking, I I've kind of been involved. When I was in North Ogden, we had a pool also and I was just curious about that.
Um, I think I can uh answer that, Mr. Dickey, based on the discussion we had at our regular council meeting last night. Um, right now, uh, it's going to be dependent on the voters here. Uh, we're going to be asking them for permission to spend that money and we will see what direction they want to provide to us.
Okay, and that makes sense. I think that's that's what it says, that the vote in June will, so they'll decide kind of which direction and then you go from there with those plans the next two or three years. That it says about the pool with those plans. Okay. I, you know what, I I don't have anymore, but I have a lot if I was to make go, you know, to the next round to to meet you more in person, I I. Which I would I would love that opportunity. I think I. Enjoy that a lot more than this. It's just it's it's hard to to really get to know people this way, but at least we can see each other and have a conversation. But hopefully, hopefully I can make that next round. I I'd love it. And and like I said before, I. I would. Be very committed to Boulder. It's right in an area I'd love. I think I've got another ten, twelve years. Um, and after that, just kind of see how things are going. I could even go longer, but. I'd like to put at least ten years in the community. I think it it makes sense to have someone there a while. And really get to know and 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 really get the trust of the residents and the council and and get to know the players, the stakeholders, everything, so. I appreciate this time. You have some good candidates. I saw the resumes. I I've been watching some of your. So it it's always, it's a fun time for you guys, but it's also, it it's a little challenging to really pick who's the best fit and hopefully I'm. Considered at least one of them, so I appreciate your time once again.
Thank you. And at this point, I would like to ask if there are any other council members that have specific questions they would like to ask. Council member Bridges.
Yes, I, ah, no. I'm trying to figure it through the microphone. Okay, hi. Uh, sorry about that. I'm trying to. Orchestrate the computer, the iPad and the microphone, but I have, I want to make sure I ask everybody the same two questions. First is, your good idea is not supported by council or residents. How do you resolve that?
My good idea?
Yeah, your good idea is not supported by council or residents. How do you resolve that?
I've had some pretty grandiose ideas in the past that are like, they're so great to me and everyone's like, I don't know. So I I I understand that my ideas, I I. You know, if if it's something they don't really buy into, council makes that decision. I'm not going to go out and and decide to to pursue and show them that my decision's the best. If there's an appropriate time to revisit that decision or or my, what I think is best, I can do that at a later time. And say, hey, I really think we should try this. And if the mayor kind of smacks me and says, yeah, that we didn't really like that, I just, you know, if I still think it's good, I might bring it back again, but in 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 a, you know, in a, in a good way, in a subtle way that. That they understand that Ed really thinks this is good, maybe we should try it.
Okay, the other one is, uh. What is your experience with dealing with other government entities such as county, neighborhood, communities and the state?
Yeah, I I honestly, I think that's one of my strong points. Is is working with others, seeing how we can work together. If there's a service that we're providing, that they provide and makes sense, that maybe we work together in it. And that's what I did in Santa Clara is we we partnered with fire, police, animal control, and even a lot of our equipment. We purchased, one would purchase the loan and the other would pay for the rent. I mean, we we did quite a bit to help, you know, little smaller cities and they're adjacent to each other. Uh, as far as the cogs and that, get to know the the people, the planners, the the. Uh. The CEO and everything and and just say, hey, we're here, I'm here, we're we're interested, we want to be a player, we want to be someone that you guys. Know that is here and there might be things we could work together to to get things done for everyone. Because there's a lot that Boulder can offer the rest of the state, the rest of the area. You got that big solar farm, you've got. You've, you know, the land there and you've got, it it's just such a great place. There's so much potential, I think, for Boulder. Play the card, try five, ten years, it it. I think it is the city, but I think everybody will think it is the city, the the city that really. Makes Nevada stand out. I really believe that. So much potential.
Thank you.
Other questions? Council member Fola?
Thank you. So, um, I wanted to ask this to all the members too. Do you have anything that may come up in your background check that you would like to address head on?
There's shouldn't be anything, no.
Anyone else? Well, Mr. Dickey, I do have one question. Um, historic preservation is something that certainly I value and I I think others do as well. Uh, do you have any experience working with historic preservation efforts?
I have with both in North Ogden and Santa Clara. There's there's Historic Society, there's the Historic Museum and stuff. I work close with them, at least helping them to, if there's grants and that, I'd find some and I I'd get them to, you know, to apply because they're the committee member or whatever. So just making sure and just keeping kind of a a beat on what's happening. I know you guys have a lot of historic. Um. Uh, buildings there and different things, but. I I have never been on the committee that kind of makes sure it's happening, but I've always had my my hand or a beat on what is happening. As far as helping with, you know, a lot of times the the grants have to come through the city. They they go and get them, but the the city has to prove them, so I have to prove that, let council know, hey, they're applying for this. This is what it means, this is if there's any strings attached, this is what we're, what we need to look at and. And make sure that we are able to 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 do in order to get those funds or if there's any kind of match. Uh. We we had in in Santa Clara, there was quite a bit of property there, Jacob Hamblin home. And a few things that uh. The church in the area owned that and kind of ran that, but they worked closely with us to do a few things with that, so. There there's, I've had some, but maybe not. The strongest.
All right, thank you. Uh, well, this time then, again, I would like to thank you very much for your time. Uh, as you pointed out, interviews like this uh. Can be a little different, uh, but I do appreciate your answers and the time you've taken today. And we will be uh moving forward with the process, so again, thank you very much, Mr. Dickey.
Thank you and good luck. I appreciate it. You guys have a good day. All right.
Bye bye. And at this time, are we going to take a fifteen or are we going to do lunch?
Uh, fifteen and fifteen.
All right. We. We will then reconvene again at twelve forty. Thank you. Uh, we are continuing on then with our interviews for city manager. I'll call the meeting back to order. Our next candidate is Dana Halavick. Ms. McKee.
Good afternoon, Dana. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Can you hear me without any feedback?
Yes, it's good. Thank you.
Great.
All right, so obviously we've got some questions to go through today, so we'll get started, and then you'll have a chance to ask questions of council at the end.
Thank you very much.
So tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the city manager position in Boulder City at this point in your career.
Oh goodness. Uh, you know, I was raised on Long Island and went to Syracuse University on ROTC scholarship. Uh, immediately following that, I went into the US Army where I was a paratrooper. Served my four years as a combat engineer and was honorably discharged as a captain. Uh, I went to law school to kind of fulfill a dream I had ever since I was younger for some personal reasons involved with my, my parents having a fairly cantankerous divorce, to say the least. Um, so I went through law school, got out, worked for a small firm, and had a client hire me away to run a small company that introduced credit cards to fast food industry, grocery stores, and movie theaters, for which I, I guess I should apologize now. That's, it's overwhelming us. Um, from there, I went and became a s- a deputy district attorney in Colorado Springs. I did that for a few years, then went to a private practice, and I grew my firm to a two-state practice in Arizona and Colorado. Uh, I then pulled back after getting married and took a job as the assistant district attorney in the third judicial district in southern Colorado. Or better or worse, ran for elected district attorney and lost in a, in an election primary. Found myself out of a job and looked everywhere, and it came down to the Virgin Islands or Kingman, Arizona. Uh, and I know you all think I'm crazy when I say I chose Kingman, Arizona. Um, but the Virgin Islands at the time, the prices were incredible. I had a disabled son who was with me, and it just wasn't right for my family. So I went to Kingman, Arizona, Mojave County, across the river, became the chief public defender. Um, turned the office around and, and did a, a good enough job in that, in changing some systems and helping the city, doing some legislative lobbying, or the county doing some legislative lobbying that my boss, Mr. Walker, uh, asked me to be a deputy county manager. Um, I took that on and oversaw the entire criminal justice system. I worked with the elected sheriff, the elected judges, the jail, um, the, the courts, the prosecutors, the indigent defenders, the legal defenders, and the contract attorneys. I, I oversaw that for about five years. Then the county structure changed and they eliminated my position. Um, and I did some interim work as a finance director for a county in southern Arizona, and went to be a city manager in Oregon, and came back to do some interim work as a budget manager in southern Arizona, uh, and then on to be the court administrator for the city of Las Vegas, and recently moved from that position to be a development services administrator, still with the city of Las Vegas. Um, you know, my primary goal is to be in a position where I can make a difference. Um, I, I think that government has an obligation to the citizens to always be looking to provide services in an open, transparent manner that maximizes the resources it has and tries to keep the costs as low as possible for citizens. Um, I deeply appreciate the, the work I'm able to do as the development services administrator, trying to streamline processes for, uh, developers and businesses, business licensing, and working with staff to always be looking at ways to do things more efficiently. Um, however, as I look at Boulder City, I think there's opportunities there that, where I can do even better things for a community. It's not overwhelming. Uh, it matches more kind of the area where I grew up, even though it was on Long Island. We didn't have a stoplight when I was growing up. We had a graduating class of two hundred and fifty, or two hundred and twenty. Um, and the size matches, and the time I've spent in Boulder City. Um, it's very comfortable. It's cordial. People are polite, very, very involved in what's going on in the community, uh, and I deeply respect that. I love it when citizens are involved, so I think it's a, a great opportunity.
As a city manager, how would you describe your management style, and how would you, how would your coworkers describe you?
You know, I, I, I think that what I do is what I call facilitative collaboration. So even though I may have ideas of how something should occur, uh, I've learned over the years that it's not a good idea to tell people, well, this is my idea. What do you think? Because generally speaking, subordinates will say, oh, great idea, boss. Um, and then you don't get the input you really need uh, from people who have ideas. Uh, and frankly, particularly coming into a position like this in, in Boulder City, the staff knows a lot more about what's going on there than I do. I may know a lot about managing and administrative and, and larger scale issues. Uh, but in terms of how the utilities work, how the water delivery system works, how the water treatments work, the staff's going to know way more. So I think it's important that when I go in, I, I talk about, hey, what are the issues? And, and help staff identify issues. I may introduce some issues that I see, um, but then at that point, kind of work with them and facilitate them to help develop the answers. By doing that, I'm, I'm able to get their input, and at the same time, be open to changing my perspective. Because my initial idea may be wrong, and if somebody else brings something forward that is obviously something that should be considered and modifies where I was thinking, then I could be open to do that. Um, and, and I think most staff that I've worked with would say the same thing. I like to empower staff. Um, you know, I've had periods in my past where I've, uh, tried to micromanage because I thought I could do it better than staff. Uh, and even though sometimes that's true, even when it's true, um, it demoralizes staff. Staff needs to be given the power, uh, to do the things that they're supposed to be doing. Um, if they're not doing them right, then it's my responsibility as a manager and administrator to mentor them and help develop them towards getting those skills and, and the knowledge and experience to do it.
During difficult periods of transition, how would you address issues of staff morale and build a strong team?
Yeah, that's a, a very pertinent question. I, I, I think I've, uh, kind of witnessed what's going on in, in Boulder City, and we've had some instances in other jurisdictions I've been in where there's been change. Uh, and regardless of why the change occurs, both citizens and staff come up with their own reasons. Uh, and for the most part, very few of them attribute those reasons to good purposes. So I think it's important to sit down with staff, talk about what their feelings are, what they want to see, what they want to see from me. I think my job as a leader in an organization, uh, is to provide staff with truth, with openness, with transparency, and at the same time to create an environment where they're not afraid to tell me the truth. Um, you know, it's the old emperor's has no clothes. If I come to work one day and I'm not wearing clothes, I sure want staff to tell me and not just, uh, be running around thinking, oh, he's a, he's a dope, and, and let me fall on my face. It's important that everybody has the ability to come forward and have that kind of input. And you do that by meeting with staff one-on-one, getting to know them, getting to know what drives them, what their desires are, what their career goals are. Um, what about their families? What drives them on a personal level? You know, study after study after study has said that despite everybody thinking money is what drives people, uh, it's generally not. It's a factor. But job satisfaction, being in a place where people feel respected and enjoy going to work is what's important. Uh, and, and finding out what drives those people, coordinating that with council. Um, i- i- if what's driving staff and what, what really is motivating council are diametrically opposed, then there's a, an issue. And I think it's my job, or any city manager's job, to express those concerns to council in a respectful and open way and candid way, um, so that people can consider things. Um, a- at the end of the day, it's always my desire to try to get people to work together, to find a common ground. If you work on the common ground, you can get a lot done rather than focusing on the things that you have in, in difference.
Do you believe you have management weaknesses, and if so, what have you done to improve yourself for the city manager position in the last twenty-four months?
You know, I think, uh, one of my, um, biggest weaknesses was, uh, I'm, I'm very hard-driving. Um, you know, in city of, of, uh, Las Vegas, they do a thing called True Colors, and I'm very green. I'm very focused. Um, I met with the city attorney yesterday on a project, and uh, he said, you know, I know you wanted to do something now to get this project done because you're a doer. You, you want to get things done. Uh, what that has created in the past is sometimes I don't pay enough attention to the people. And I think that, that one of the biggest things that I've been able to draw, particularly from the experience in, in the city of Las Vegas, is developing a much, much stronger e- emotional intelligence, being aware of what people are, are giving me in terms of body feedback, uh, the unspoken tones of their language, in terms of, are they on board? Are they not on board? What are they feeling? Have I offended them? Have I not given them enough attention? Um, I, I actually had the opportunity to work with a, um, professional development consultant, um, and went through a whole series, and one of the things that, um, i- is my new man- mantra is be present. Uh, it's too easy for me with a, a mind that races a hundred miles an hour to be thinking twenty steps ahead and be thinking how I'm going to respond or who I'm going to talk to next. And I literally put a sign up on my wall that says, be present. Pay attention to the conversation that's occurring right then, right there. Be able to give people feedback and really listen to understand what they're saying, rather than listen to respond.
How do you see the city manager's role in relation to the city council, city staff, Boulder City residents, and other governmental entities? And who do you believe you support, you should support first, the staff, the council, or the public?
I, I, I don't think there's a first. The first is to the city. Um, and, and ideally, all three of those players are equal partners. Um, council gets elected by the citizens. If I'm not able to honestly and openly convey what I'm hearing when I'm out in the community, when I'm out at a rotary meeting, or uh, you know, the, the theater meeting or, or something like that, if I can't openly and honestly convey that back to council, um, so they can take it and do what they want with it. Uh, I, I don't tell council what to do. Council drives the philosophy. They drive the principles of where they want the city to go. But ideally, that's driven by citizens. Um, I, I think one of the dangers is in having a disengaged citizenry, where only the very supportive or very the oppositional people come forward and voice their concerns. Um, when that occurs, it, it's very, uh, common that a council will react to the extremes. And the extremes generally don't make a community happy. You really need to kind of find that middle ground. I, I think that to this point, the city of, of Boulder City's done a fairly good job. I think the controlled growth management plan, um, the master plan reflect those values within the community. Um, and I, I think they're very good. The, the upcoming ballot, uh, measures, I think, reflect or will reflect what the community as a whole want to do. Um, I was very impressed when I was down last weekend at the amount of community involvement in local politics. I would say one out of every ten houses in the community has a political sign supporting somebody who's running for for city council. Um, that's amazing. Yeah, I've never seen that in another city of any size. Um, watching city council meetings, seeing the public comments, you have a very involved citizenry. Um, I, I think that my listening to the citizenry, my listening to council, my listening to staff, my responsibility is to find out where there are inconsistencies in those three messages. When there's an inconsistency, that inconsistency needs to be resolved. Um, there's obvious extremes that, that you can come to, you know. Uh, council wants to upgrade a water treatment plant, and in reality, staff is saying, y- you can upgrade it, but it's only going to last for five or six years because there's other components that are going to cost us money, and i- it's just counterproductive. We're throwing away money. A- at that point, it's my responsibility to come forward with the staff experts and talk to council one-on-one and explain exactly those intricacies of why those two goals are inconsistent. Um, I, I think that one of the most pleasurable things I get to do is get out in the community. Um, it, it's been more difficult in Vegas because it's a very, very large community. Um, but back when I was in Mojave County, I was an active rotarian. Um, I ran the, the Open World Exchange, and we brought a bunch of, uh, rotarians from the Ukraine in, and we ran them all over Arizona, teaching them about the, the American system. Um, I, I love that kind of stuff. Getting out, talking to the community. Um, I would go regularly to community groups to talk about, you know, what is it each area of our county did? And the same thing should be going on with the city. I, I think that a- as you look at the kind of social media input that can affect decisions on council, um, social media, I think, is great. But I also think that social media can be twisted by people who don't have accurate information. Reaching out to those citizens, meeting with them, meeting with those groups, no matter how large, how small, and conveying the same consistent, honest message is a key. And, you know, the, the wonderful thing about a small community, whatever you say in a small community, whether it be to staff, council, or the citizenry, is going to get back to everybody else, so you better be consistent in your messaging. And I think that's the key thing. Um, so again, I, I don't think there's a single priority. I, I'd love to say, oh, you got to obey the council because council has the power to hire and fire you. But the reality is, if ethically and integrity, council is doing something that's way off whack from what citizens want and everybody else, I don't think a city manager can stand blindly by and just say, yes, sir, yes, sir. Um, that'll get the council in trouble. It'll get the city in trouble. It'll create, um, partisanship, and I don't mean Republican, Democrat, but, uh, one oppositional view against another oppositional view that creates schisms in a community for a long time. So I think that a city manager has a responsibility to come to council respectfully, openly. Frankly, disagreements I don't think should be aired in open meetings. You should get as far as, as you can in closed meetings, one-on-one, uh, and have cordial, courteous discussions in council meetings where the debate should continue. Uh, I'm not saying everybody should walk to the table and sing kumbaya during a council meeting, um, but it should be cordial and respectful. And I think the city manager plays a huge part in creating that kind of an atmosphere by coordinating those three different areas of the city. Sorry, that was kind of a long, long-winded answer, but it's something I'm passionate about.
Tell us your experience dealing with the controversial issue, and how you would work to provide accurate information to the community while still respecting those who have expressed legitimate concerns.
You know, I think one of the, the more controversial issues I've, I've dealt with during my career was when I was deputy county manager in, in Mojave County. The, the leadership in the county made, uh, what I'd consider a subtle mistake by determining what the jail per diem rates would be for the cities um, at a point in time when the cities had already adopted their budgets. Um, and that rate was significantly higher than what the cities had anticipated, so, um, they did not know how they were going to meet the potential bills that came forward. Um, I worked with each of the three cities, Kingman, Lake Havasu City, and Bullhead City. Uh, they're, they're electeds and they're appointed officials. Um, and we worked through the situation, and, and the way we did that was the jail per diem rates consisted of obviously staffing costs, food costs, but also medical costs. And the way they were determined was they lumped all those costs together, divided by the number of inmate days, and that was the per diem cost. What we provided and negotiated with those cities was the opportunity that we pulled out the medical costs. And that lowered the per diem significantly. But then what we told the city is, if we had an inmate who identified, who had an identified medical issue, we would notify that city. They had 24 hours where we would foot the medical bill. After that, if they decided they needed to leave that defendant or that inmate in county jail, then they had to pick up those medical costs. So it basically put in their control that portion of the per diem. But that was, that was, there was a lot of angst and heated words expressed among a lot of the parties during that time.
How do you handle conflict between team members or between team members and council members?
Um, I, I, I won't tolerate conflict between team members and council members. Um, you know, i- if there's going to be conflict between anybody in council, that's the city manager's responsibility. And the city manager has to be professional enough to be able to handle that in an appropriate manner where he does not create bad feelings. Um, staff needs to bring those conflicts to me. Um, and we'll talk through them and, and candidly, if it's a principal decision that this is the direction the council wants to go, then it's staff and my responsibility to say, okay, then that's the direction we're going to go because they represent the citizens. Um, and that's where we're going to go. If on the other hand, as I said, it's over an issue such as, uh, the upgrading of a water treatment plant, um, and staff is correct, then I'm going to stand with staff, but not get in a controversial situation where you're wrong, we're right, you're stupid. That, that does no good to anybody. We need to go in with the facts, we need to go in with, um, pure objective discussion, not so objective about what we think is right or anything else. At the end of the day, the city manager and staff's responsibility is to provide the best advice, information, and data we can to council. And then council's job is to make decisions based on that. If we fail in giving good, good advice, good data, good objective reasons why something should occur, then we're taking away from you the ability to make good decisions. And that is, that's what's wrong. And we, and we cannot do that. Um, in terms of, um, staff conflict among themselves, I, I, I'm, I'm not going to tolerate it. I, I, I will sit down with the staff and we'll have a little counseling session about, you know, why are you guys disagreeing with this? Or, or gals disagreeing with this? What is the issue? We need to continue to work together. Um, if, if somebody is right and the other person is wrong, uh, we're going to be honest and say, hey, look, you, you shouldn't have said things like this. I've had it in the past where staff has inadvertently hurt somebody's feelings. Uh, it, it's not that they did or didn't do something maliciously, they simply hurt somebody's feelings by disrespecting them. And there's nothing wrong with sitting staff down and saying, you realize you upset this other person? Um, and it was inappropriate, you've got to do better on your communication skills. Um, I, I have no problem, um, suggesting or even requ- requiring that staff that needs some of that emotional intelligence training or, or other type of communication training, um, goes through that kind of thing. Um, I, I think that from what I've seen and know about staff, from Chief Gray and Chief Shay and, and Ms. Pelletier, and, and Mr. May, you've got some great staff. Um, I, I think the work that I've seen from them, uh, and heard from them is, is exceptional. Uh, I think that making sure that there's a succession plan in place that keeps their kind of character and their kind of work ethic in place as the city moves forward, um, is important. And to me, getting those conflicts resolved as quickly and early as possible across the board is key to that succession planning. Otherwise, staff sees the, the conflict and they say, well, I don't want a part of this. And if they don't want a part of being leadership, you don't have succession planning.
How would you work with the public if they had complaints with city employees or council members?
You know, the, the, the first thing I think is I have, I want to listen to them. I, I want to listen to them. Uh, I'm going to ask that they be respectful of me, that they be, I absolutely be respectful of them. But I want to understand the basis for what their concern is. If it's, it's, they, they think staff, you know, you, you hear the story, oh, there's a road project and there's eight people standing around and one person digging a hole. You know what? Sometime that's true, but there's reasons why that's true. You know, there, there are people on, on collective bargaining breaks, there, there's other things going on. And the, and citizens just don't see that and they don't understand that. So I think taking the time and the patience to be able to understand the reasons behind certain decisions or the reasons behind things, why things are being done a certain way, uh, is absolutely important. Uh, I will never turn away a citizen. Um, generally speaking, my door is open. If I'm there, my door is open. There's, there's few occasions where I'll say, I'm sorry, I can't meet you now, but let's get you on the schedule. Because I, I do want to understand the problem. Because the citizen is not always wrong. Uh, and, and usually there's a little bit of truth, if not a lot of bit of truth, in the things they have to say. And I need to take that into consideration. Um, sometimes it does nothing more than raise your radar so that you can be looking uh, for a, an issue that they say they've seen, but you've never seen. So bottom line is that it's important to talk and, and see that. Uh, in terms of, if they come in and start talking about council, you know, so much of that is a small p politically motivated. They don't like this person because they supported the other person in the election. Um, I, I will absolutely listen. Um, but I think it's inappropriate for me to run to a council member every time a citizen comes and says, oh, so-and-so says they, they didn't like the word you used at the last council meeting. Just like I have an obligation to be open and honest, I, I would encourage citizens. You know, if you have an issue with your council person, please, you should talk to them. Uh, I, I'm not just going to be a filter and, and try to pass things through and, and anonymously. We all have a responsibility to be open and candid to each other.
Communication is key for keeping council members informed. How would you keep council members informed on issues facing the community?
You know, what I'd, what I'd like to do, frankly, we, we, we have in, in the city of Las Vegas that works pretty well. They have a series of briefings every week and it's broken into two to avoid open meeting, uh, laws. Um, but during the week of agendas, that meeting basically simply reviews the agenda and asks if there's any questions, just so that staff is prepared. Uh, it's not to get decisions, obviously, there's no way to do not violate open meeting laws. Um, but it's to ensure that staff is fully prepared to present materials that council's interested in at those agenda meetings. On off weeks, it's simply to bring forward issues, um, that are arising, that, that may be on the horizon or the status of certain projects, just to keep council advised. Uh, i- if council doesn't want to do that, um, then I would meet with council on a smaller basis. Uh, that's not my preferred method because when you talk to somebody, even with the exact same words being said, the body language, the intonations can be perceived as a completely different message. Um, and I've seen instances where somebody says, well, that's not what he told me, even though the same message has been said. So I think those small group meetings that do not violate open meeting laws are, are key to getting a consistent, uniform message across all, every, all council people.
Sound fiscal management is a high priority for the city. Explain your experience developing budgets, including the size, and how you ensure expenditures stay within the, within those budgets, including capital projects.
So I think, um, you know, the, the, i- in both my experience as the finance director and as the budget manager and my interim jobs, I was brought in to do budgets. Um, and, and my experience is that they were both situations where budgets needed to be reduced. Um, and I am absolutely not a fan of flat across-the-board reductions. I think that fails to recognize that different folks have different responsibilities and different priorities within a community. With that being said, um, we would go back and look at historical trending on, on spending. And if there were spikes in spending that weren't justified, uh, because candidly, all too often I've seen in government, particularly when I was back in the military, people operated under the premise of spend it or lose it. And I, I don't want to see people do that. I want to see them spend on things they need. And if the money needs to be there, then we should be budgeting for it. If at the end of the day, when you go through all those budgets and people need more than is available, then difficult decisions, uh, have to be made. Um, I, I did that in, uh, Sierra Vista, I did it in Hila County down in Arizona. Most recently with the, the COVID experience. Um, when that first broke out, we had a, a very quick message from the, the city that said, okay, you better figure out how to cut your budget significantly. Figure out 5% cuts or, or it might have even been more, uh, in all your expenses and staff. And we got together over a weekend and, and both my, uh, elected and all my appointed, we sat through a very, very difficult weekend, making difficult decisions of, um, how could you do without certain people? How could we protect the people that we could? And that took a huge balancing of, of people who had seniority rights. And if they didn't work for us, they'd bounce to other places in the city. Um, those are difficult decisions, but we did it with the input of all of the managers as well as the electeds. In, uh, Hila County, I, I honestly can't off the top of my head remember the size of the budget, uh, nor can I in Sierra Vista. And most recently in, in the city manag- city administrator or court administrator, our budget was about 24 million, uh, that we had to adjust quick overnight and, and figure out how to get it, to keep it moving. I'm not a stranger, you know, it's, I, I think the things that, to this point, Boulder City has done to stabilize its budget through the, the leases are excellent. Um, i- it's not a end-all to end-all. There, there are other things that I've seen that, that, you know, I'll, I'll throw in automatic increases. I, I don't think are necessarily ever justified if they're not also looking at, uh, CPI or inflation. Um, so there are things I think that, that need to be looked at to protect the citizens of Boulder City. So I'm not sure if that completely answers the question, but I hope so.
How do you prioritize and stay organized?
I, I make a lot of lists and I use a lot of stickies and I move them around. Uh, in my office now, I have a big whiteboard behind me. Uh, and things get put on the whiteboard and if something's going to go up and it's over higher priority than something else, I erase the one priority, put the other one in, move them down. I think that, um, I, I keep an electronic calendar, uh, as well as a physical calendar. Um, I have reminders, uh, staying organized. Meeting deadlines is absolutely key. Um, I will always try to be prepared and have, um, projects or papers or other information done well ahead of time because I, I don't like working down to the last minute. And I ask that same thing of staff.
If you were selected, tell us what you would tackle during the first 90 days in the position and why?
Getting to know all the staff and all the council people, uh, from council, getting to know what your priorities are, uh, individually and collectively. Um, trying to identify hotspots, um, where there are distinct differences of opinion and just kind of putting them in, in the back of my mind, knowing that as we come forward on those issues, that we need to make sure we have all the information possible, uh, to try to civilize the conflict, to make sure that it's not an emotional debate, rather a factual debate. Getting to know staff, um, what their career plans are, how comfortable they are with the current situation, uh, in the city. Know, getting to know what I can do for them to make their job more enjoyable. Uh, and, and obviously, you know, when staff comes forward, well, I could use a 10% raise. Well, okay, but let's be realistic. What are the things? What can I do to make you feel better, uh, about your job? I, I, I think those are absolutely key. Getting to better understand, uh, all of the budgets, um, all of the various utilities, all of the leases, uh, all of the upcoming leases, the options, uh, I, I think are key, getting to understand all of the, um, the boards and commissions and the members on those boards and commissions and similarly what their priorities are, um, are all important to me, basically building a foundation of knowledge that I can begin to accept the input from, from relative to the data uh, and the requests from both staff and council and citizens uh, and be able to use that foundation to evaluate those and give good and solid advice and opinions to council.
What is your understanding of the controlled growth policies in Boulder City? And what charter provisions, ordinances, or citizen initiatives are involved?
Well, the, the ordinance is, is to me, the big one, the Controlled Growth Management Plan, I think, is, is huge. The limitation on the number of units, um, is, is pretty black and white. There are some areas to, that allows massaging where units can be carried over into the next year, although there's a cap on those. Um, I, I, I think those are as black and white as they can be. I, I think that the controlled growth policy raises some long-term, um, strategic issues. I think that, uh, obviously, a simple principle of economics, when you control supply, but demand goes up, the prices go up. Uh, and, and having looked at some real estate over there in Boulder City, I agree that prices are definitely rising in Boulder City, which on the one hand is a very good thing. But on the other hand, for people who moved there a long time ago, maybe on fixed incomes, uh, an increase in value equals an increase in taxes, uh, equals potentially being priced out of your home at some point. Um, I think that's a concern that needs to be looked at. I think that even though that growth policy allows for some affordable housing, ensuring that there's a mix of housing so that you can actually have places where a workforce can live, uh, i- is important. Um, I think that the upcoming resolutions, for instance, on, uh, whether you can spend money uh, from the Capital Improvement Plan on, or leases on a pool are good. Uh, I think allowing citizens to say, yes, you can move money from one, um, dedicated fund to another use is solid. Uh, and I think I would have to rely on, uh, council being the ones that's out talking to the community relative to the political aspects of that. Um, I think it's totally inappropriate for staff and/or the city manager to be trying to influence and vote one way or the other. It's our job to simply provide the facts of what that money's going to be used for, what it was intended to be used for, uh, what the impacts of shifting that money are and what the impacts of not shifting that money are. Um, but in terms of influencing the vote one way or the other, um, that's really up to council. So I, as all in all, I think it's good. I think your controlled growth does pose some challenges, um, but they're certainly not insurmountable.
What would your vision of Boulder City be in five or 10 years?
You know, I, 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 I think that implementing things like, you know, Main Street America or, or visual improvement, uh, programs where people can get money to improve their properties, I, I think is huge. Uh, we are working on a program in, um, in the city which would allow what I call reinvestment of assets. Uh, when there are code violations, there are fines, fees, and penalties that are assessed and, and received by the city. And we're creating a program that basically places those funds back into a, a limited fund that it can be used to provide micro grants to property owners who, their property may be falling into disrepair. Uh, it may be in violation of code, um, and they just don't have the money to do it. And rather than seeing those people forced out of their homes or their codes or their houses condemned because they can't do it, uh, we want to take the money that came from other code violations and allow that reinvestment back into those properties to preserve them and rehabilitate neighborhoods. Uh, I think that's important. I think the new growth, the, the houses on the south side, uh, you know, they're beautiful, uh, beautiful neighborhoods. Um, I, I think some of the core properties could definitely benefit from a program like that.
Nonprofit charities contribute significantly, significantly to the community. What efforts do you believe local government should engage in with nonprofit charities?
Um, I, I think we should support their, their activities, provided they're consistent with what, uh, the, the goals of the council and the rest of the citizenry are. Uh, if there's a, a fringe nonprofit that is out there that wants to, you know, shut down the Hoover Dam because it uses too much water or, or, or something. Um, yeah, that, that's not something that necessarily the city should be supportive of. yeah, that's not something that necessarily the city should be supportive of. But in terms of groups like CASA, Red Cross, Salvation Army, Goodwill, even St. Jude's Home down there, they are completely consistent with what I have seen the city wants to be. I have seen the people of Boulder City and read about the people of Boulder City being compassionate, being involved, wanting to improve their community, and not just for their own benefit, not just because, "Oh, improve the downtown so my property values will go up," or "I can enjoy a place." But they really want it to be a place where families can come, where families can raise their children in an environment where they were raised. And like I said, I was raised in a small town. My mother was a schoolteacher. Everybody knew her, and as a result, everybody knew me. If I got in trouble, my mother would know about it before I got home. And that was a great place to grow up. I turned out okay, although some may disagree. But I think that's the kind of place people want to live, and they want to have their neighbors live like that, and they want to have those kind of values. And I think keeping those kind of values and doing things that maintain those kind of values moving forward are key.
What role does local government have in regard to businesses and economic development?
You know, I think it's interesting. As I looked at the recovery plan, I think Boulder City's in line for a little over a million to a million and a half dollars, thereabouts. I'm not sure. I haven't looked at the current status of the budget. But unless the city desperately needs that for some sort of a core infrastructure project, I think reinvesting that to make sure that the local businesses that were really hurt by the COVID shutdown, that lost business, that are at risk of losing their leases, that can't hire employees back, supporting them either with direct grants or loans, I think is key. That's, I think that's government's role in this kind of a situation. I think absent the COVID situation, I think government's role is to be as supportive as possible of those businesses that contribute to that positive environment within the city. Again, things like visual improvement programs, maintaining the sidewalks, maintaining buildings to code, not letting certain neighboring businesses get dilapidated or run down so that it hurts a business are important. I think that the role in terms of economic development, it's different than some of the economic development I've been involved with previously. You know, in Oregon, we were trying to put together an international agreement with Japan to ship out essentially grass. The valley up there was one of the largest grass seed producers, and one of the byproducts was just all this grass, and they couldn't burn it. And they couldn't get rid of it. And we were trying to do an international shipping agreement that also included a local railroad company. That's not Boulder City. Bringing in Costco or a huge distribution center is not Boulder City. Supporting micro breweries, supporting good local restaurants, supporting... You know, one of the ones that I think is just absolutely wonderful as an option for Boulder City is bringing in people who can now work remotely. I think people would love to be able to work remotely and on a break, walk around their neighborhood in an environment like Boulder City. The city of Las Vegas is doing it. A lot of the cities across the country are recruiting those remote workers. I think that's an opportunity where you're bringing in people with good incomes and preserving some of those homes, possibly getting them into some of those homes that are in a little more need of reinvestment and using that to build the community.
So I've asked you a lot of questions today. What questions do you have of council?
No, I guess my main question is, what do you see as the main skill or need in the next city manager?
Anyone wishing to respond? Well, I'll lead off, Mr. Blavick. I think that, you know, from my perspective, what I'm looking for is someone who does have an understanding of Boulder City. You know, we often hear the term "unique." That may get overused, but we're certainly different than some of the other communities here in southern Nevada. And I think having a city manager who understands how we're different is what I would be looking for, but also how we can continue to improve our city. Anyone else? Councilman Adams?
Yeah, I guess along those same lines, yes. Is understanding those aspects of Boulder City that do make it unique and where those strengths are. I think that is the most important thing, because we are a different community than many others. And so a lot of times, people don't understand, you know, why that uniqueness is our strength. Sometimes they come in thinking that they are our weakness. So I think that is the most important part, is understanding what makes Boulder City Boulder City.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Did you have any other questions, Mr. Blavick?
You know, Mayor McManus, at this point, I don't. I'm sure I will if I'm fortunate enough to proceed to the next level. But at this time, I'd just like to thank you and the council members who are participating. And Ms. McKee, it's nice to at least see the upper part of your face today.
Well, any questions from council for Mr. Blavick? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I've had questions that I've had. I think you answered the first one already, which was, "Your good idea is not supported by council or residents. How do you resolve that?"
Well, I can have the best ideas in the world, but if nobody else wants to do it, it's not a good idea. And, you know, you can... Again, I have to be open to listen, and there are reasons you don't or staff doesn't think it's a good idea. And it may be historically based on the history of staff, the history of the citizen perspectives. It may simply not be what you want for Boulder City. I have to be open to being able to say, "Okay." I can't get mad. I have no ownership in my ideas. I'm not invested. I've been wrong far more than I've been right. And the reality is that I'm just fortunate that when I'm wrong, most people tell me I'm wrong and I stop moving forward. And that's where I really appreciate the honesty and the candor from both staff and council.
Thank you. And also, in terms of, what is your experience of dealing with other government agencies, such as the county, neighboring communities, or the state?
So I spent a lot of time at the legislature, pretty much my whole time with the court, dealing with criminal justice reforms. I also worked with the city of Las Vegas legislative team, reviewing all the legislative bills that came through, along with a member of my staff, and provided input. One of the things that I think was particularly valued was, I don't have tunnel vision. I don't think, "This is my job. I'm only going to look at this one issue." Almost everything that you do inside of government affects something else inside of government. And we have to always be looking at those collateral impacts and the unintended consequences. Sometimes the best idea that everybody thinks is great, you do, and it's just, it ends up in a disaster because there was an unintended consequence. So thinking those through, really talking things through, I think is key. As I said, when I was in Mojave County as deputy county manager, I was negotiating deals with the three cities. It's not uncommon. I'm not afraid to do it. I'm not afraid to talk to elected officials or appointed officials. I think I'm very fortunate that I have great relationships throughout the city of Las Vegas. At this point, I work directly for Mr. Perrigo in the city manager's office. I think that I could easily pick up the phone, have conversations with them about issues, or have conversations with their legislative team, ensure I know where they're coming from, ensure they know where we're coming from and where our council's coming from. I think that's an absolute strength.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilmember Folder?
Thank you. Good morning. Do you have anything that may come up in your background check that you would like to address head-on?
I was on Who Wants to be a Millionaire? And I don't think I made too much of a fool of myself. In fact, when I went, I was working with the court, and I asked my boss at the time, "Are you okay if I go?" And he said, "Just don't make a fool of yourself." And I said, "Well, what would be making a fool of myself?" And he gave me a number, and I came back with more than that number, so I did okay. But that's out there, and I don't think there's anything more than that. I had a different birth name. I changed my name when I was 18 as soon as possible. I did that because, as I alluded to before, the familial situation was not good, and I did not wish to carry my father's name after that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Well, Mr. Blavick, again, I appreciate you participating in this. You know, doing everything in public. You've been here in Nevada for some time. You know what our open meeting laws are like. But again, I appreciate your thoughtfulness on your questions, and we will be making decision probably within the next couple of weeks.
All right. I wish you all the best. Thank you very much.
So now we're breaking for lunch. Okay, but we also want to do our evaluations. So we will reconvene then at... Oh, well, decision's been made for us when we start back. All right. We will reconvene at that time.
Are you ready for me to start retiring, Holly?
All right. I think we're technically ready to get started here. Again, we are doing the city manager candidate interviews. I will call us back into session. And the next candidate is Mr. Forrest Nureberg.
Good afternoon, Forrest. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Good afternoon.
Can you get closer to your mic or turn it up?
Sure. Is that better?
That better? You want more? Okay, we'll start with that, and we'll see if it gets too quiet, Forrest. All right, Forrest, obviously, we've got some questions to get through this afternoon, and then we'll have a chance for you to ask questions as well.
Okay.
All right, Forrest, so tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Boulder City manager job at this point in your career.
Okay, well, so I've been working in the public sector, not counting my service in the military, for about 29 years. And I've kind of progressed from, you know, different kinds of organizations and worked for state and local governments. And, you know, I've been doing the city manager thing for a while, and I've been pretty successful. I think this current community, we've done a great job in, you know, growing a lot of opportunities and making a lot of progress. And, you know, I've kind of been looking for a little bit larger niche. And I certainly like the desert. I spent a lot of time in it when I was growing up, and also some time in Nellis when I was in the plains. So this is really intriguing. You know, you have a very interesting community, and it has some challenges, but there were also a lot of things that interested me, like the small-town nature of controlling growth and honoring, you know, the history and tradition of the community. And so those things kind of really drew me to apply for this opportunity.
Okay. As city manager, how would you describe your management style? And how would your coworkers describe you?
Well, I think openly describing the same way that I believe that I manage. I do try to delegate, and I believe that, you know, the managers who work for me are competent, so they have tasks they need to do. I'm not a micromanager unless I have to be. Generally, I don't feel like I have to be, but I'm also like, if the job's not getting done, I sit down with the manager and we figure out why it's not getting done, what we need to do to correct it, if there's a shortage of manpower or just a shortage of direction or whatever. And I think that they would say that I'm a fair manager. I'm pretty even-tempered. When I get concerned about something, I try to find creative solutions or solutions that work, even if they are instantaneous. I like to solve problems and get the job done. And I think they would pretty much say that same thing about me.
During difficult periods of transition, how would you address issues of staff morale and build a strong team?
Well, I think that's always a challenge. But part of teamwork is actually doing things together. I mean, there's the job that's straight up, that's what it is. But I also like to do activities with a team that might not be, you know, you're like, "Well, let's all go bowling together." That's an example. But it takes people out of maybe their, "I have my desk or my vehicle, and this is what I do." It gives people a chance to interact. And, you know, sometimes we do that with a barbecue or some kind of thing where, you know, we did that with a, we had a kind of issue actually between our police department and our public works department. And it was kind of interesting, because it wasn't really founded on anything that was factual. And we actually had a barbecue, and we kind of required everybody to come. The first thing, they didn't like it. But by the end of that day, there were some conversations between the officers and the public works employees and line employees where they actually went, "Oh, well, you guys didn't think that? You didn't think this? We might have facilitated that a little bit." But I think that, you know, things you can do to boost morale, you know, things that recognize employees, like employee of the month and those kind of things. But really, making sure that people talk. And I think that's the hard thing between departments and sometimes within a department.
Do you believe you have management weaknesses? And if so, what have you done to improve yourself for the city manager position in the last 24 months?
Yes, I probably do. My historic weakness as a manager might be that I've been overly forgiving. You know, my finance director says, "You know, you're really a nice guy." Which I probably am. And sometimes I have let particularly managers, maybe they didn't do everything I wanted to do or needed them to do. And sometimes I compensated by just doing that myself. But I would say in the last two years particularly, you know, kind of had a change in our city council over the last three years, which then allowed me to spend more time as a manager. And what I've done is, if I have an issue, rather than trying to say, "Can I resolve it?" Is to get the manager to resolve it. And I think that that historically might have been one of my weaknesses, because I'm a little type A, and it would be like, "Well, fine. If they're not getting it done, I can get it done." But I've realized that a city manager, you know, you take on a lot of things, but you have to delegate or you don't really get to sleep.
How do you see the city manager's role in relation to the city council, city staff, Boulder City residents, and other governmental entities? And who do you believe you should support first? The staff, the council, or the public?
Wow, that's a really great question. Honestly, I think that I look at the city manager as the chief operating officer of... I look at the city manager as the chief operating officer of an entity. You know, the number one... I mean, employees are actually the number-one job of making sure they're doing their job and getting it working. But the job is to support the city council. Hopefully, the city council is supporting the citizenry. That doesn't mean you don't pay attention and talk to citizens and see what their concerns are and sometimes ask them to share those with the city council. But your role is really, to me, to support the city council and look at how you're supporting the employees. And sometimes that's, you know, hopefully, that's a mutual operation. But I've had, like here, when I started here seven years ago, we didn't pay our employees very well. And they hadn't had employee reviews or raises for six, five or six years. It was really kind of an odd situation. And, you know, the city council did not seem particularly interested in that initially. So I had to think about, though, what was good for the employees. And we had some work sessions with the council employees and kind of talked about that. I think the role of citizens is really important. And, you know, meeting with citizens, understanding what they want and kind of conveying that to council, but also encouraging citizens to actually talk to the council members and to come to council meetings. I think it's really important, whether it's on Zoom or in person, to come to council meetings because that way the people have an opportunity to have a say in how they're governed. And also, you know, meeting with individual council members. As far as outside organizations, I think it's really important for the city manager to represent whoever they work for in a very professional manner. And also to, you know, forge partnerships with folks of outside entities, whether it's in their city or town or county or the state or federal agencies. You know, having good relationships with them that represent what your city's about is a pretty important role for a city manager.
Tell us your experience dealing with controversial issues and how you would work to provide accurate information to the community while still respecting those who have expressed legitimate concerns.
Wow, well, I've had a few of those. And some of them are the simplest things in the world. The last community I worked for before this, the issue of water meters became very controversial. So really, we took a number of efforts forward, both with the newspaper. Facebook was kind of new then, so not too many people had it. But we also used the radio. We had public forums and public meetings, some which were kind of heated because a lot of people didn't understand. They actually thought that the water bills would go up with meters, which honestly, for the average residential customer, wasn't true. So we were able to bring forward data and get information out to the public so they could understand, you know, it was mandated by state law. So it wasn't like really an optional kind of thing to do. But we were able to show people, a lot of constituents, that they would actually save money if we had meters rather than paying a flat rate. So it was a combination of, I really think that the open houses in that community were very effective because people hadn't really been invited into those kind of things. So they got to understand how our water system worked and why we needed meters. And it wasn't just, you know, some engineers coming in or the state talking to them. It was actually was the town board members and myself and having some really good discussions.
How do you handle conflict between team members or between team members and council members?
Well, so between team members is generally pretty simple for me. The team members and I get to go to a nice meeting room and figure out what the issue is. There's no way to solve it with one thing, but I just actually had a conflict with three department heads the other day, which was kind of interesting because nobody was communicating directly with each other. And so I just set up a quick meeting. We all went and sat in one of our conference rooms together and talked about it. And by the end, everyone was like, oh, oh, you were doing this and we didn't understand that because we were doing this. And then when they all talked, they had figured it out. There's still a latent conflict between two of them, which I'm working on. And that's really about them communicating better. You know, between employees and the council, well, unless they're direct employees of the council, that employee and I are going to have a discussion because it's not appropriate for, to me, for city employees to have a direct conflict with the individual city council member or the city council as a whole, based upon the chain of command. You know, if they're a department head or if they are a sporting employee, they work for a department head, they talk to the department head, go to the chain of command. I have dealt with that directly before where, you know, I had an employee who didn't like, and it was a management employee, who did not like the way that her department was being managed and subsequently went to the city council with some grievances, which were all unfounded. You know, and we dealt with that. I mean, I had to talk with her about it, but she was very determined that, you know, that there were some things going on that weren't going on. And eventually, that ended up in her separation from the city, which was kind of unfortunate. She was a bright individual, but she did not have her facts straight and she violated the chain of command on a number of occasions. So you have to take whatever measures are necessary to want to protect the chain of command. Doesn't mean people don't have the right to their opinions, but there are appropriate avenues for that.
How would you work with the public if they had complaints with city employees or council members?
Ah, well, you know, city employees is a pretty easy part. I deal with that fairly often. You know, of course, in most places I've worked, we've had a formal complaint kind of procedure, which is okay. You know, it can be in some things that's necessary. But most often, I encourage citizens to speak to me directly. I, you know, I'm not here every minute of the day in my office, but, you know, if they call and leave me a message and want to come and talk about a problem, I deal with a lot of utility customers that have problems that really the utility clerks maybe don't have the time to deal with. And I deal with folks that have issues with, you know, we have that with police officers, et cetera. But I like to get the whole story from them first. And occasionally, I've had that with council members. And usually, the thing there is, back to the turbo, what level of grievance it is. But generally, I have dealt with, had a discussion with the mayor about it and said, look, you know, here's this citizen, you know this person, and, you know, they have an issue with a council member. And do you want to talk to the council member? Or should we talk to the council member? Or does it seem founded? You know, sometimes it takes a little bit of investigation to find out that it's not really about what it seems to be. But I think you need to get a lot of information before an issue is really brought forth because sometimes people are upset about things that really aren't related to what they're saying. So it takes a little bit of work and time and attention, but I think that that's pretty important.
Communication is key for keeping council members informed. How would you keep council members informed on issues facing the community?
Well, so, you know, one of the things that I utilize is pretty much every week, I write a memo, an internal memo to the council that has, you know, maybe the hot topics might be one or two pages. It kind of depends on what all is going on. I also write like supplementary memos to the whole council. I really believe that the whole council should get information at, you know, roughly the same time. If I have a council member that comes in and says, hey, can we really talk about this particular issue? I have that conversation with them and I'm also saying to them, look, I'm going to share this information with the rest of the council and say, you know, we had this discussion today and this is really good information for the council and I send that as emails. So as things evolve, I mean, I have a weekly report and that's useful. But as things evolve, I often send an email or a memo, depending on how detailed it is, to the council as a whole.
Sound fiscal management is a high priority for the city. Explain your experience developing budgets, including the size, and how you ensure expenditures stay within those budgets, including capital projects.
Right, well, you know, I'll start with capital projects because that's always fun. You know, right now, we're in the middle of an eight-point-six-million-dollar events and conference center project that involves a whole lot of moving parts because there's citizens raising money, there's grant sources, there's state funds, there's city funds. You know, it's a very complex, more complex than if you just borrowed some money. It's a pretty complex project with one goal. I work really closely with our finance director in particular, but with the finance department, going through invoices. On this project, I'm actually the city's project manager, so I work with the architect on expenditure draws. And we spent a lot of time making sure that we're in on budget and that's always fun with contractors and it's a challenge and it has been on this project, particularly during COVID with the increased cost of materials and such. So I spent a lot of time making adjustments and making sure that we're going to come in on budget. And, you know, we're, I don't know, eighty-two percent done right now and we are on task for budget, although we just found a piece that was misdesigned. And, you know, I'm talking with the council about that, but I think that it's something that, you know, it's a paving part that wasn't bid. So sometimes those things happen, but the rest of the project is on task. As far as the general budget goes and the oversight of departments of expenditures, you know, we kind of do a two-layered thing. I actually review all the expenditures every month, which is, you know, maybe it's kind of tedious, but I look for things that, you know, the finance firm does that as well. But I look for things before they go to the city council. They say, hey, what is this? And then I also, we have a dashboard. We use Casell software, which isn't quite as cool as Tyler, but it does have a really good dashboard. And as I'm reviewing expenditures, I also go into the dashboard and look at the GL items and look at what their expenditure is and where their forecast is. And if they're off, then I talk to the department heads about, you know, why are we? I mean, some things I know, but then I'm like, well, why are we at eighty percent already? You know, what's going on? You know, and we spend a lot of time, you know, trying to keep costs under control. And I will say that we've been very successful here in City Montevista when I started here. You know, it's a much smaller budget than you all have, but we had two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars in general fund reserves, which is horrendous. You know, we were one budget cycle away from being functionally broke. But I was able to, you know, carry that message with the city council about fiscal conservancy, which I am very much a proponent of. And, you know, while maintaining the services we provide to the citizens and actually improving them and making them better, I mean, the last seven years, we turned that around and we now have five months of general fund reserve, which is about where we want to be. So, but it took a lot of scraping and a lot of attention to details of expenditures to get there. So I'm very functionally work on conservative fiscal activities daily.
How do you prioritize and stay organized?
Well, you know, I use a number of techniques. Part of it is just, you know, simple calendar. I use Outlook calendar. And I have ongoing projects and task lists within there. I also budget my time so that, you know, I have my priority things that I'm working on. And there are some things like this multipurpose event center building that, you know, I know they're going to take up a certain amount of time. But I also give myself time for, you know, things that I can't prioritize and things that happen, you know, that go wrong. Like a water line breaks at two o'clock in the morning. Do I have to be there to fix the water line at two o'clock in the morning? No. But I want to have to be aware of it. And sometimes I need to go over there at five o'clock in the morning, see how it's going, and that will kind of shift my schedule. But try to keep things fluid enough that I don't schedule too many things in one day so that, you know, I drop the ball on things. I also, you know, delegate and make sure that people I delegate to, that's part of the job, is make sure that they're getting the task accomplished.
If you were selected, tell us what you would tackle during the first ninety days in the position and why?
Well, you know, there are some interesting things you all have going on. You know, one of them is a land sale. And, you know, I see that you have some really competent staff people and stuff, but I want to know a lot of the details of that. I noticed just reading about some things that, you know, a recent development that had some issues as far as stormwater drainage in the final plan. And, you know, I'd want to see, well, you know, I have been a property developer, so I'd want to have a pretty good thumb on that. I'd also need to spend some time, you know, with the finance department, you know, seeing exactly where we are fiscally. And then there's just getting to learn the fiscal plan and the employees of the city as well as the citizens. I think it's really important in the first ninety days to meet people, both, you know, the state people that are relevant, the county people, but the people that are working for us, right? I mean, I think that that is, you know, so they know who I am and I know who some of them are. I mean, I won't remember everybody's name the first time out the gate, but looking at what the scope of the operations are, meeting the people, you know, having individual meetings with the council members because I don't know you all very well. So getting an idea of what your goals and objectives are, you know, maybe spending some time with strategic plan review. I know you all have some really excellent documents, both in your finance department and your strategic plan. You have some really good materials, you know, and understanding how relevant they are if there's any changes and kind of figuring out where the council wants to go. Those would be the first ninety days, which is pretty busy.
What is your understanding of the controlled growth policies in Boulder City and what charter provisions, ordinances, or citizens' initiatives are involved?
Well, you know, I would say generally I understand that you have an ordinance that controls the growth. I can't, I honestly can't speak to all the details of how you got there, but having grown up in Lakewood, Colorado, when it was a small city, you know, all the changes in the front range, I'm very much in favor of controlled planned growth and that was something that was attractive to me, that you don't have a huge community and that you're careful about how it develops. So I can't tell you as I know all the ordinances or anything of that nature.
What would be your vision of Boulder City in the next five or ten years?
Well, I think, you know, I'm interested in learning about what the timing is of additional solar fields and solar leases. I think that that's a really, it's a great way to provide for long-term financing for the community. I also think that the recreational amenities that are offered there are pretty stellar, you know, based on the side of the community. And I can see those kind of growing and evolving. And also, you know, really ensuring the fiscal stability of the community so that if there are larger capital projects that need to be undertaken, you know, a little bit of rainy day planning would be really important so that, you know, Boulder City is a little bit younger than, you know, than most of the cities I've worked in. And I personally have always have an eye on, you know, infrastructure improvements and maintenance. You know, I'm working in a city here that, you know, has dozens of miles of old water pipe that need to be replaced that they never planned on. So, you know, I think the planning and actuation of infrastructure improvements as well as recreational improvements, while maintaining a good fiscal balance, you know, makes the community stronger. And I really think that the historic preservation aspect is a great thing that might be useful in increasing commerce and the charm of the city. And so, you know, a good, vital, strong, economically sound community that people enjoy living in. And I think that's what I would like to see.
Nonprofit charities contribute significantly to the community. What efforts do you believe local government should engage in with nonprofit charities?
Well, you know, there's lots of ways that you could partner with nonprofit charities. You know, certainly, I've worked in communities where, you know, the city council had a large amount of discretionary funds that they awarded to these charities, which was good, you know, the time the community had the money to do that. But I think that the partnership opportunities with the nonprofits is always a huge thing. You know, our community saved a historic... You know, our community saved a historic theater that was, you know, I don't, you probably all are entirely familiar, but, you know, a while ago, about seven years ago, movie theaters all went to digital. And so the owners of that theater, they did not want to put in the money to do that. So, you know, they're like, hey, let's give it to the city. So, which is, could be good. Building needed a lot of work and it needed projectors. But we worked with two local, the city partnered with two local nonprofits and actually got guidance from a third nonprofit from outside of the community, as well as the state to put together a layered group of funding to, one, you know, to revitalize the theater and the main theater, which is a large one, we did a digital projector. But we all worked together hand in hand with the nonprofits. And I think that nonprofits can provide a lot of opportunities that stretch beyond what a city can do by charter or statute.
What role does local government have in regard to businesses and economic development?
Well, that's a philosophical and a financial question for each community to kind of solve on its own. I think, you know, COVID kind of pointed out that where local governments can help local businesses, maybe in a more exceptional manner than maybe historically, that it's an important thing to do for the community. You know, sales taxes is great, but jobs are more important. And, you know, being able to help maintain jobs, certainly in the current atmosphere where there are funds coming from the federal government to assist is really important. I think, you know, one of the roles of local government that's often overlooked is the ability to say yes to development and to business, like business retention, like I want to expand my business, but, you know, the zoning code says no. You can just say no, or you can try to find ways to work with businesses to help them. You know, business retention and minor expansion are hugely important activities. And I think that recognizing that the city can be an aid to business rather than a hindrance is really important. When I first got here, people said, you know, Monty's a terrible place for business. They never held businesses, and I was, I didn't know why. People said that, but I kind of figured out after a while is that we used zoning as more of a hammer than guidance and as a way to assist people. And, you know, we're continuing to evolve the way we do that business. But I think that if you can find ways as a government to help business, you know, we have some incentive programs, they're not huge. I don't believe you can buy significant businesses. The community itself should attract them, like can you do some, a few things to help them? Sure, but I think it's a measured approach. I don't think, you know, wholesale, you know, business is kind of designed to stand on its own, but everybody needs a hand from time to time. So maybe a case by case, or in this case with COVID, an event basis where a city might reach out and with more of a helping hand.
Okay, Forrest, we've asked you a lot of questions today. What questions do you have of council?
So, what is your most important thing you'd like to have in your city manager?
Anyone wishing to respond? Councilmember Adams?
I think, you know, at least for me, and I think others on council share the same ideas that is understanding Boulder City's strengths, making sure, you know, we are a unique, a different community than a lot of Southern Nevada. And, you know, making sure that we, you know, have someone who comes in and understands that those differences are our strengths, that they are, they're not our weaknesses, and that really understanding what makes Boulder City Boulder City. I think that's, that's the most important thing, because a lot of people come in with a lot of ideas, but the most important thing is to, to kind of stay the course, because I think it's proven to have done very well for us.
I appreciate that, and I actually like that because, I mean, what I saw in your offering and what I looked at and read in the newspapers and did some research, I thought, you know, it's a great community, really a strong staff. And it seems like you all got your stuff together really well, which is nice. And so, you know, from my standpoint, I'm like, that's a great place to start. You don't have to reinvent the wheel, because you guys already have a really strong one. So I appreciate that.
And I would just add to that, that, you know, one of the sayings that I've heard is, people live here because they want to, not because they have to. And I think that is one of the strong points of this community is that the people who do live here very much enjoy doing that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, Mr. Nureberg, I very much appreciate you taking the time to participate in this interview. We will be moving the process along, and Ms. McKee, I'm sure we'll be in touch with you.
All right, thank you, I appreciate all your time.
Before you go, yes, Councilmember Bridges?
Sorry, I wanted to ask the questions, I wasn't sure if... Okay, I have two questions. I wanted to make sure everybody gets the same questions. First one, your good idea is not supported by council or residents. How do you resolve that? Your good idea?
Well, you know, the world has lots of differences in opinions. And for me, I'm sure I have good ideas, and there's some that I think are great. And some of those my employers, you know, city councils or boards that I work for have not liked. And, you know, I'm willing to make my case, but if it's not what they want us, they want me to do, then that's okay. You know, I think part of my job is to provide ideas, but doesn't mean they're all good, or that they all make sense, or they're all what you want. And you have to really accept that if you do what I do for a living, that you're, you know, nobody's always right. And something that I might think is a good idea, you all may think, wow, you know, yeah, you know, we tried that five years ago, and it wasn't a good idea, and I don't know about that. Or it doesn't meet with where you want to go. And that's, to me, something that's readily acceptable.
Okay, and the other question is, what is your experience in dealing with other government entities, such as county, neighboring communities, or the state?
Wow, well, I, you know, I have worked with multiple counties. You know, I've actually worked for a county in a joint city-county operation. I worked with the local counties, you know, all the cities I worked with, I've worked with the counties pretty closely. You know, I worked for the state of Wyoming at one point. So I worked with multiple counties, cities, towns, nonprofits. And, you know, I ran a statewide housing nonprofit that, you know, I have a lot of experience working with pretty much every level of government, including legislators. So, you know, I'm, I'm pretty well-versed in talking to different people and talking about what we need to get done or want to get done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. So my question is, do you have anything that may come up in your background check that you would like to address head-on?
I really don't think so. You know, I've been working in the public sector for a long time, and I don't believe there's anything that's overly negative.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, well, again, Mr. Nureberg, thank you very much for your time today, and we really appreciate you participating in this process.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors, you all have a great day.
Thank you. All right, we will take time to complete the evaluations on this interview, and we will be back in session then at 3:05. Thank you. Again, we are conducting the interviews for candidates for city manager position. We are now on to our fifth and final candidate, Taylor Tetter. I will call the meeting back to order. And Ms. McKee?
Good afternoon, Taylor, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, good, thank you. All right, Taylor, thanks for joining us early, appreciate that. And obviously, we've got some questions to get through, and then at the end, you'll have a chance to ask council any questions you might have.
Sounds great.
So to get started, just tell us a bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Boulder City manager position at this point in your career.
Sure. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thanks so much for having me today. I'm Taylor Tetter. I'm currently the Assistant City Manager for the city of Leavenworth in Kansas, and I've been here for over five years now. We have over 267 employees. I have direct supervision of our Convention and Visitors Bureau, probation division, our municipal court, our public information office, our IT department, and I also handle our economic development efforts. I truly love providing a high level of customer service to the public. I really enjoy the day-to-day operations of the city. I'm highly experienced in budget and CIP development. We have a $54 million total budget, a $23 million general fund, and about a $30 million five-year CIP, which I serve as the main manager of CIP. I also serve as a staff member on several boards and commissions, serve as the liaison to several intergovernmental entities and community partners, as well as assisting in our legislative efforts on behalf of the city. In addition to that, I also serve as an adjunct professor for a course in the MPA program online for the Wichita State Master of Public Administration program. I do that in the fall semester, this will be my third year of doing that, and I find it's a great way to give back to the profession. And I'm sure you've seen my resume, I do have the Master of Public Administration degree. And while I was there, I recognized the importance of both public finance and city county management. So I did graduate certificates in both of those areas as well. Two years ago, I did sit for the Certified Economic Developers Exam through the International Economic Development Council. And it really tests you on a variety of different things, ranging from entrepreneurship to other economic development-related things, which I think we could get into later. But I'm very used to evening meetings, I love being active in my community. I'm actually the president of our Lions Club this year. It's one of the largest clubs in the nation, actually, with over 200 members. Very involved with our chamber, our port authority, and then regional organizations as well. And I enjoy speaking engagements, really love taking pride in my work. And at the end of the day, I'm so happy to see the direct results of making life better for the residents.
As city manager, how would you describe your management style? And how would your coworkers describe you?
Well, I think that when working with the mayor and council, my management style is participative. I encourage all opinions to be shared, and then we kind of reach that consensus on best practices. I think it allows for the organization as a whole to move in a positive direction. It also leads to prudent decision-making while providing everyone at the table a voice. But in the day-to-day operations of the city and managing city staff, I think I really identify with servant leadership, style of management, and it kind of has that serve-first mindset that allows employees to become empowered to make impactful decisions and in turn increases their performance. One of my strengths is remaining calm in stressful situations and empathetically handling upset employees or members of the public. Just making sure that others feel heard really allows me to kind of diffuse those situations and find out the root issue. And I practice an open-door policy for my office and welcome employees, members of the public, and elected officials to meet with me as needed, to keep that open channel of communication. Was there a second part to that question?
How would your coworkers describe you?
Okay. I think they would describe me as fair and as a team player. I like to make sure that everyone, everyone is able to put in their input.
During difficult periods of transition, how would you address issues of staff morale and build a strong team?
I think it depends on the staff. For some, recognition and feedback goes a long way. I've had employees that do excellent work, and they received our employee of the quarter or employee of the year, and that boosted their morale and really created more drive for them. Others, recognition doesn't go as far, so they need more team meetings and brainstorming and being listened to, and then making adjustments accordingly.
Do you believe you have management weaknesses? And if so, what have you done to improve yourself for the city manager position in the last 24 months?
So, a weakness. I think that I can end up being a perfectionist at times, and in the past, I might have spent a little bit more time than necessary ensuring that a work product or document I'm comparing or something else is really polished and as exceptional as possible. I've worked on that, implemented some tools to automate some of those finishing touches for me through some software programs I've been able to use. And so I'm able to focus my time on more pressing matters to realize when it is good.
How do you see the city manager's role in relation to the city council, city staff, Boulder City residents, or other governmental entities? And who do you believe you should support first? The staff, the council, or the public?
Okay, starting with the staff. I truly believe that department heads are hired as those subject matter experts, and I treat them as such. So giving them the tools and the means necessary to carry out their positions, I think, leads to their success. I believe in monthly one-on-one meetings, going over project lists, priorities, new directives, really holds everyone accountable and also leads to no surprises. The best way to lead a team with everyone on the same page is just balancing that emotional intelligence and giving department heads the breathing room that they need to effectively accomplish their tasks. In my experience, managers who micromanage projects or invoke a culture of fear rarely get the results that they want. So promotion of a collaborative environment where department heads can work with me in open, results-oriented exchanges to share their opinions, I think that helps them do their best work. While deadlines exist, there's flexibility to offer departments and employees some ways to pivot our expectations to accomplish the most time-sensitive things that we need to get done. With elected officials, which, I think the second part of your question is which is the most important? I think putting elected officials first for the city manager is definitely the priority. I think a lot of times, providing education about why we're doing something, the tasks that the professional manager does handle, the day-to-day operations of the city, the management of the employees. But going through why we're looking to execute the policies and priority directives from the governing body this way, and having that open communication and treating the governing body with respect, I think, is definitely a high priority. I'm very skilled in writing policy reports, memos, with my professional opinion in that, along with courses of action that would align with... along with courses of action that would align with your priorities and directives. And then dealing with residents, I regularly field questions and concerns from residents, and some can be irate or have some type of thing, big or small, that they're might be upset or concerned about. And there's not always something that can be done for their issue, but I often find that I have to balance my critical thinking skills and listening, and sometimes that person just needed to be heard. I've had countless times where there wasn't that solution that we could offer, but the person was much more reasonable or even happy after we discussed why we do things a certain way and the situation was diffused. I do have a recent example. A resident called me about a shoulder dropping off a highly-traveled road and was really concerned about a safety issue. So I drove out there and had our streets department go take a look, and it definitely indeed was an issue, and they fixed it immediately, and she was just so grateful and happy. And then on the flip side of that, that same residence, she had a concern about snow removal on her street, but unfortunately, she didn't get that same outcome because our governing body doesn't have a bare-street policy on snow removal, and so that wasn't really the answer she was looking for, but the education there helped her.
Tell us about, tell us your experience dealing with controversial issues and how you would work to provide accurate information to the community while still respecting those who have expressed legitimate concerns.
Sure. So I think with any controversial issue, it really comes down to a solid strategic communications plan, which would encompass all types of communication, whether that's with the public, the council, employees, community partners, and much more. We need everyone involved to feel the city is open and transparent so that we can develop that trust. I have two examples of some controversial issues that we recently dealt with. So here in our city, we had never implemented any kind of stormwater fee or utility to deal with a lot of our crumbling infrastructure. We went out and found that we had eighty-four million dollars of stormwater projects that we could do tomorrow and had no funding source for that. Our governing body had been researching moving forward with some type of stormwater fee or tax, something like that, since the nineteen nineties, and it had just kind of gotten kicked down the road because there was just no political will to move it forward. And our current commission took that on and staff developed a plan for it. And so now, we're collecting revenue for that program, and we're going out and making meaningful changes for the residents. But there was a lot of opposition, so a lot of the way that we handled that was the public education, holding meetings. And this was right before the pandemic started, but we held a lot of public meetings on that. And then, another example that was really recent, our county actually opted out of our governor's mask mandate related to the pandemic, and so our governing body decided to issue their own ordinance implementing a mask mandate in the community. And while there was an overwhelming number of people that were very positive and for that, there was a faction within the community that also was against it. So that additionally led to more public education, so.
How do you handle conflict between team members or between team members and council members?
So I think it really comes down to getting everyone on the same page. A lot of times, things can perhaps get misconstrued between emails or even just through day-to-day conversations and need some clarity. Recently, I had our person who serves as our webmaster and a department head that weren't necessarily seeing eye to eye on whose responsibilities were what on their webpages. And so the department head goes on there, and everything's moved around. They can't find what they need. And then the webmaster is responsible for making everything look uniform and make sure that it's following our style. So we all sat down and got together and went over whose responsibilities are what and what we can do, maybe more communication between them so that if there's someone making a change and things are going to move around, then everyone's on the same page, everyone knows. So that really helped take care of that issue.
How would you work with the public if they had complaints with city employees or council members?
So I think that I would receive the complaint and then, of course, look into the issue. I'd thank the member of the public for letting me know that matter would be handled internally. And if there was an issue that needed to be resolved, like if they needed assistance with getting a building permit and weren't able to get that, I would make sure that that, I would assist them in that. And if there was an issue, big or small, I'd approach that individual that they had to complain about and just ask them, hey, what's going on with this? And really, handling difficult personnel matters is really part of the job. I've had quite a bit of experience in verbal counseling of employees, written reprimands, and over the last five years, I have made a couple tough decisions related to demotion or termination for some major issues that we had to work through. At all times, I keep the best interest of the city in mind and then really getting down to why of what's occurring with an employee. Again, I think balancing that emotional intelligence and critical thinking skills. There can be an explanation to why that employee's performance might be suffering, and then we can find out what tools they need and resources they need to succeed. And I also place a high emphasis on professional development for both myself and employees, so everyone should be continually learning. And I've seen several employees really rise to the occasion and greatly improve, but every now and then, there's a case where some are unable. So I think, going back to your initial question, I think the leadership development is really key in preparing others.
Communication is key for keeping council members informed. How would you keep council members informed on issues facing the community?
Well, I would start with always telling elected officials what they need to hear. My goal would be for no elected official to be surprised ever. And I know that's a lofty goal, but that would be what I would strive for. I'm used to constant communication through either text, phone calls, email, in-person regular meetings. I find to be extremely effective in keeping everyone informed. One of our city commissioners actually was texting me Saturday morning at eight-thirty about our citywide spring cleanup, so I'm very used to that. I also, even as the Assistant City Manager, I provide a weekly report to the governing body about all of the highlights of my week that they need to know about. And then I also think that agenda review meetings or and/or a summary email to explain agenda items and why staff is recommending certain recommendations, and then we can field questions beforehand or assist in your questions.
Sound fiscal management is a high priority for the city. Explain your experience developing budgets, including the size, and how you would ensure expenditures stay within those budgets, including capital projects.
So I'm highly involved in our budget development. I'm on the team of the Finance Director, the City Manager, and myself. We meet with the department heads and handle negotiations with them. The CIP is my responsibility, ranking the projects, determining where those fit in, if they fit in, and then aligning them with our governing body's priorities. We actually were able to achieve the GFOA Budget Award for the first time in our city's history three years ago and continue ever since. And then they've always obtained the Certified Annual Financial Statement Award, but we've continued to obtain that. I really believe that staying in budget is something that I place high importance on. Working with our Finance Director to either find flexibilities in other line items or projects that we had cost savings or salary savings can also help the projects and other departmental budgets that might have to go over for unavoidable reasons. We also have worked really hard on our reserve, city reserve. When I first started, there were no real financial policies spelling out our reserves, so the commission set a goal of sixteen point six seven percent based on the amount of months that we would like to have in a reserve, and we've greatly exceeded that. We're at twenty-seven percent right now. On a side note, I was really impressed to see your Tyler Socrata software on your website improving transparency for residents related to finance. We use Munis. It's an enterprise solution by Tyler, so I have extensive experience with the financial softwares. And in the last city that I worked for, I also used Ncode, so I would be able to jump right in and be able to go through all of the financials and budget preparation easily. One thing that we also did to take it to another level, instead of having that default purchasing card line item, we actually did an integration, so we're actually able to see what all of those charges are when we're looking through all of the pages. So that's really gone a long way to kind of see where the expenditures are going that were put on purchasing cards. Another part of finance that I find really important is Public Works and Utilities. I'm in on their monthly meetings. We go over their entire project list, which corresponds back to the budget, projects, and CIP expenses. I have a great working knowledge of the utilities and how they fit into the budget and CIP time. We don't operate our water utility, just to let you know, but in the last city that I worked for, I did have exposure with the water utility. But the manager should know the reason why a trickling filter mast arm needs a repair or UV lights at the wastewater treatment plant need to be replaced, but won't necessarily be certified to run the plant, but should know those things. I've also had a lot of experience with procuring equipment and machinery for those types of facilities as well.
How do you prioritize and stay organized?
Well, I really like making lists. Excellent use of my calendar. I make sure I put everything on there, so I never forget. I like to prioritize what needs to be done first, items for the governing body, things with a hard due date, utilize delegation, filing and using folders, especially on my computer, so I know exactly where something is and where I can find it and then refer back to it as needed. Because you never know, three years down the road, you might be facing the same issue, and you can look it right up. And I also, on the same thing as that, I think organization of emails is really important as well. Having a record of what I told a resident or an employee, it's really good to refer back to because a lot of times, someone might remember something differently than it actually happened.
If you were selected, tell us what you would tackle during the first ninety days in the position and why.
So of course, I would start with building relationships with the staff, the council, residents, and definitely community partners. I'd dive in and familiarize myself with the budget in depth, fully comprehend your priorities list and strategic plan, as well as the city's comprehensive plan. I would go in on my first day and start making lists of those top priorities, other administrative matters, start working on team building, looking and identifying new initiatives and projects that might create efficiencies or improve the quality of life for the residents. An example of that, I think you guys have a fantastic staff. You have a great website with a lot of wonderful tools. And I think that I would be able to help you take it one step further to be kind of a twenty-four-seven interactive city hall through different organization of the web assets, and it might even lead to reductions in staff time, but aid in that transparency that you're striving for and the helpfulness to the residents.
What is your understanding of the controlled growth policies in Boulder City and what charter provisions, ordinances, or citizen initiatives are involved?
Sure. So I've researched your controlled growth ordinance quite a bit. I know there's the hundred-and-twenty dwelling limit and the thirty-five hotel room limit per year. I did pull your building permit reports over the past eight years, and I did average it out. It looks like it's about twenty-six and a half homes per year over the last eight years, with commercial properties averaging about three a year. Some years were higher or lower. But I think that's a wonderfully appropriate amount of growth. It's very similar to what we have here, so I am used to those types of numbers. I saw that there was an initiative in the past couple of years about the five-home developer rule, and that that still is standing. So that's interesting, but I really think that you have a premier community to protect and safeguard its charm and family friendliness and identity, and I would take on that task as your city manager as well.
What would your vision of Boulder City be in five or ten years?
Sure. Well, I would focus first on the council's vision, and I know that that really is preserving the small-town charm and the history, enhancing the quality of life for everyone, maintaining economic vitality and essentially making sure that the history is preserved and the city can also move forward for the future. I think that we'd also put an emphasis on providing excellent customer service and accountability, excellent communication and openness to utilizing technology and other innovative techniques to increase the services that we're providing residents.
Nonprofit charities contribute significantly to the community. What efforts do you believe local government should engage in with nonprofit charities?
Well, I'm very used to working with many different nonprofit organizations within the community, like the United Way. We have a large convent here, the Sisters of Charity. So I deal with them on a regular basis. So I think it is important, and it just depends on what the needs of the community are. So in ours, there are a lot of nonprofit organizations that focus on rental assistance and financial preparedness for families, food banks. And then, of course, medical. There's a medical clinic that provides free services for people that can't afford it. And then with the pandemic, through the CARES Act funding and the next installment of funding through the new plan that's coming, I've dealt with a lot of different nonprofit agencies. And it really seems that at times you might not even know all that they're doing for your community. And so I do believe that supporting them is definitely in the best interest of the community. I also work with a lot of other different intergovernmental agencies, like our school district, the federal government, since we have Fort Leavenworth here. So I really liked to see that some of your top employers are government employers because I'm very used to dealing with their hierarchy and requirements, and our chamber legislators, and much more.
What role does local government have in regard to business and economic development?
So I'm sure you were all wondering, because I do have the Certified Economic Developer designation, that you would be worried that maybe I would want to come in and change the feel and how the town is portrayed. And I think that would be very untrue. I think the economic development efforts for the city of Boulder City could really focus on business retention and expansion. It's 10 times cheaper to grow the existing jobs that you have than to attract new ones. And I think entrepreneurship and grants, loans, workforce development would be excellent strategies to help the business community in Boulder City. I've worked on a lot of different projects. I administer a low-interest loan fund and have done a lot of different facade grants for businesses throughout our community. But I also have a lot of experience in historic preservation. So our community had very little areas for Fort Leavenworth employees to live in our community. And so they would live in Kansas City. And we were able to spur the redevelopment of several buildings in our downtown. And now there's over 400 high-quality lofts, apartments, where they can live. So that was one of our city commission's priorities. And we were able to accomplish that through some different tools that were available to us. I listened to a council meeting from mid to late 2020 where you all actually discussed economic development priorities. And the mayor mentioned that a second grocery store would serve the community well, but lacked some support from the former city manager. I actually ran an Esri Retail Marketplace leakage report, and it definitely looks like there is a major need there. And it could come down to telling the story of the community to specific grocers or looking for other tools or properties that would be best suited for them. But I thought that was a fantastic idea that I'd love to work on. Councilmember Hoskins also mentioned that a watercraft manufacturer and an IT development company or trade schools would be beneficial. And so that's the type of economic development projects that I think that I would be able to assist you with. And not only that, it would increase the quality of life for the residents. And I think with the controlled growth ordinance, you'd be able to focus on those high-quality jobs or high-level public good-type things like a grocery store. So you'd be able to be more selective. And I think it would be exciting to work on that. On our city side as well, we own several historic buildings. We have a former Union Pacific Railroad depot that was built in 1888. And we just finished a $3 million stone restoration project on that. It's on the National Historic Register. And have done many other projects with privately-owned buildings, helping them with city requirements, things of that nature. So I know that you place a high importance on historic preservation as well. And I think that also plays into economic development. Last night, our city commission actually authorized the purchase of a building that's been vacant for 14 years. It was built in 1890, but it features 14,000 square feet on a high-profile corner in our 26th block downtown. And so next week, we're going to release an RFP for people to have the opportunity to redevelop it. It featured a very difficult property owner that just was unwilling to sell, and we were able to get it under contract. So we're really excited about doing that. Yeah.
Okay, Taylor, we've asked you a lot of questions today. What questions do you have for council?
So I actually have five questions, but I think I should probably clarify why I'm interested in Boulder City. It really piqued my interest. My wife and I visited a couple of years ago and thought the community was exactly the type of city that we'd love to make our home. It's a premier, well-planned-out, family-friendly community. I'm really impressed with the over 200 square miles that you have. But I also found that it had some similarities to the community that I'm at now, the budget size, the employee count, the fact that it's a full-service community. And I'd really be looking for a long-term presence in the position, hopefully of 10-plus years. But I just wanted to let you know that. But I do have five quick questions. My first question is, in any community, the electric utility reliability is very important. Would you be able to speak to any capacity concerns that you might have for the future?
Anyone wishing to jump into that one? I'll give it a try. You know, for many years, I believe our utilities had been neglected. You may know the history of Boulder City. It was actually built by the federal government. And so all of the infrastructure was inherited by the city when the federal government turned it over to the residents. We have been putting a significant amount of our capital improvement funds into the system and have another major project going at this time. So I believe that we do have a reliable system. We certainly have just completed a couple of projects to make it even more reliable, but there's a ways to go on it yet.
Excellent. Thank you. My second question, water is a major issue throughout the entire country. And I noticed that you have top-notch conservation efforts. And the recent Lake Mead Lower Submersible Pump Project allows water to be accessed through drought conditions. But do you foresee water resources to be a top issue over the next decade for this region?
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm going to address that because I sit on the Southern Nevada Water Authority Board. And absolutely, it's going to be an issue. We are at a level where in the next several years, we're going to be looking at the drought contingency program of having to restrict use. We've got, oddly enough, during the pandemic, there's been an increase valley-wide, an increase in water usage, especially in what's called consumable water. It's water that does not, you know, it's not the inside water. It's outside water. And so we have increased use and diminished demand, supply. So yes, the answer is, we're going to probably, in the next few years, going to be looking at, I don't know how much rationing we're going to have to do because the valley itself has been excellent in terms of conservation. But a lot of people are going to be talking about it and making some hard decisions. We're already talking about it on the board, and I know it'll probably become more of a conversation here, too.
Thank you so much. So I read some reports about the naturally occurring asbestos being present throughout the community. And it seemed like the reporting of that kind of dropped off in 2018. I was just wondering if you thought that might require more involvement from the city in the coming years or if that's kind of a non-issue now?
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I'll do my best to tackle this one. It obviously is an issue. I think, you know, it is in the greater region. It obviously is certainly something here in Boulder City, but they've seen it throughout Southern Nevada. Certainly, I think the efforts to look at it is more than just at the city level, but certainly more at the county and perhaps beyond that. But it's going to be a lot. I personally think that a lot more needs to be done to look into the issue because it's a public health issue. But, you know, of course, there's many who seem to disagree with that and think it's a non-issue. So it's certainly one of those controversial topics, but I do feel it needs to be addressed.
Great. Thank you. From all my research, it really seems like you have a great staff with knowledgeable department heads. Is there any insight? I know as the council, you're a little removed from the day-to-day, but you interact with the staff quite a bit. Do you have any insight on the current culture of the employees?
Anyone? Well, I will, you know, at least from my perspective, say, you know, we're in transition right now. A number of our department heads have started over the past two or three years. So we have a relatively new staff here. I think that, especially over the past year, there has been much more understanding between the different departments, or I should say, between the departments and the city council. I think that has been very beneficial. But again, we have some relatively new people here.
Excellent. Thank you. My final question, what is the top quality that you're looking for in your next manager?
Thank you. I think, you know, I'll speak for myself, but I do think other members of council think that what is most important is understanding what makes Boulder City Boulder City. It is different. It is unique than most other communities here in Southern Nevada. And really, it's a lot of other communities just around the country. We are unique. And I think it's understanding, you know, those strengths that make up those qualities. You know, not coming in, you know, not looking for somebody who, you know, comes in with all these great ideas on what the next big thing is going to be for Boulder City. Not that big ideas aren't good, but, you know, really understanding, you know, our strengths and staying the course because it has worked really well for us over these many years. So I think those qualities is just truly understanding what makes Boulder City so special.
Thank you.
Well, again, thank you very much for your time. I think we do have a couple of additional questions from individual council members. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you very much. I have two questions. One is, your good idea is not supported by council or residents. How do you resolve that?
Well, typically, I would try to gauge the support before I get too far along in the process. But at the end of the day, I could just put it in my back pocket and save it for another time. I definitely think I could move on to another idea or something else that could benefit the community.
Okay. And also, what is your experience in dealing with other government entities, such as county, neighborhood, neighboring communities, and the state?
Quite a bit of experience with that. I regularly deal with our county here. We're the county seat, so highly involved with them. And then we deal, I serve as the liaison for Fort Leavenworth, which they have 5,000 of their own residents, dealing with their command structure. And I've learned a great deal about how all of that works. But we also are surrounded by a community to our south, Lansing, Kansas. It's about 12,000 residents, so we work very well with them. We're actually working on our road interchange project right now with them to add a couple lanes to a major intersection that enters our community on the south end. So I'm very used to working with other government entities, school districts. We actually just did a land swap with our school district. They owned a park that we technically leased from them and maintained. And then we swapped them some land at another park, which they have a sports complex where they wanted to do some additional ball fields. So very used to that collaboration and working together to make, you know, positive changes for the community through working with those other government entities.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. I just want to ask, do you have anything that may come up in your background check that you would like to address head-on?
I do not.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Well, again, I want to thank you, Mr. Teder, for taking the time today to answer our questions and speak with us on this. I believe we will be getting back in touch, probably within a week or two, on how the process will move forward from this point on. And again, I really appreciate the time you've taken with us today.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and council members. I'm extremely passionate about local government and just love this profession. And I would be willing to do whatever it takes to make Boulder City a better place, higher quality of life for the residents. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. We will take time then to complete our evaluations. Prior to moving on to potential direction, we will reconvene at 4:10. All right. We have now completed the interviews of the five candidates for the city manager position. I'll call the meeting back into order. Ms. McKee, looking at what you had set out here, looks like the next steps you have are full background screening, present draft interview questions, and consultant will present the questions for the in-person interviews of top candidates. We'd initially determined after review of the resumes to... to, uh, speak with six of the candidates. One had withdrawn, so we are at five now. Um, I would guess we are looking then to narrow this a little bit further.
That would be my recommendation, yes.
Um, I would think, uh, you know, either two or three of the top candidates would be appropriate.
Yes, my suggestion would be, I can take your evaluation sheets. We can do that composite the way, same way we did the city attorney. And then maybe you could decide from there if, if there's three or two that rise to the top based upon that. That would be my suggestion.
All right, and how long do you think it would, uh, take to do the compilation of the evaluation sheets?
Should be able to have it to you tomorrow.
All right. Um, council, any thoughts, comments, questions? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I think I agree with, with that, um, with those suggestions that have been made to narrow it down, um, to two or three and then, um, go on for the background and, and, and in-person interviews for those.
Um, I would guess then that probably we would need to have a short meeting to look at the evaluations and discuss, you know, how many of the candidates we want to go forward with in-person interviews. Um, Mr. Mays? I know we've, uh, loaded up our meeting schedule fairly well over the past month or so.
Mayor, we can certainly look at another specially-called meeting to address that or add it to the agenda for the, uh, next city council regular meeting.
Okay, and our next regular meeting, I believe, is April 27th?
Correct.
Okay.
So it'd be council's choice.
Yeah, I think I would like to see this part of it move ahead a little quicker than that. Um, because again, right now, at this point, what we're looking for is to compile the evaluation sheets we have and discuss the two candidates, two or three candidates. Um, I believe we could do that with a relatively short meeting, perhaps in the next eight to 10 days.
Yes, we can, uh, certainly look at the schedule and see where there's availability.
All right, other thoughts from councilmembers? Councilmember Folda?
So I was just looking at the calendar. Um, we have a meeting on the 19th to certify the election results, but I don't think that would allow enough time, days. We're short two days on that, so we couldn't add it probably to that one.
So we'd probably be looking at something, uh, 21st, 22nd? 21st would be a week from today. 22nd would be an extra day. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'd prefer the 21st to 22nd. I have a pool pack board meeting on Zoom and I have no idea how long that's going to last.
On which day?
On the 22nd, so the 21st would work best for me.
Madam City Clerk, would that be sufficient time for you?
Yes, it's a Wednesday.
Yes. So I'm not sure what else we may have that day, but...
Well, in the evening is planning commission, but we'd be looking at another, uh, during-the-day meeting, so...
Probably, and, and again, I, you know, I foresee it as being relatively short. I mean, it, it's possible we could have a longer discussion, but, um, again, I think once we see the evaluation compilation, uh, that should give us some insight. Any other thoughts? Councilmember Adams?
You know, I guess I'll just add at this point that I, I was, generally, I was just very impressed with the, the quality of candidates that came before us today. And I just wanted to, to thank them all for, for taking the time to, to have done this with us. It was a long day, but, um, it was definitely well worth it.
Anyone else? Um, is that sufficient direction or do we need a motion?
Certainly, what we will do in terms of next steps is, uh, coordinate with everyone's schedules, look for, uh, time on the 21st. It sounds like the 21st would be the best day for everybody and, uh, post for the specially-called meeting so that you can provide, uh, staff further direction.
All right. Okay, again, before we move on then, any other questions, comments, suggestions?
I just need to get your evaluation sheets, Mayor. Something for the plane ride home. Something for the plane ride home.
All right, we will move on then to item number two for possible action matters pertaining to the city attorney position.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Brittany Walker here, your acting city attorney. I wanted to let you know that I, I wanted to disclose that I do have a pecuniary interest in this item. Uh, Mr. Booker will be here for the remainder of the meeting and I will be leaving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm Bryce Bolt, Administrative Services Director. Item two for possible action is matters pertaining to the city attorney position. And, uh, today we could, I have a discussion regarding the April 5th, uh, interviews and evaluations of the named candidates and city council to provide direction regarding the next steps regarding the city attorney selection process, including, uh, a possible contingent job offer. And I'll hand over the proceedings to Sarah McKee.
Thank you. Ms. McKee?
So, um, you received the compilation of your scores, um, from those interviews that day. Um, at this point, uh, you know, we would be looking for direction as a part of the process of our proposal. Uh, we offered to do negotiations for you with every selected client that would be, or candidate that would be. So, you know, direction being, is there a candidate ready to be given a, a contingent offer based upon, uh, background check? Um, I think there's a health screening as part of that as well. And then we would need to talk about what would be in that contract offer.
Thank you. Questions or comments? We do have within our packet the, uh, compiled scores from the interviews that we had done previously. Uh, those scores had, uh, Brittany Walker at 2560, Kristi Kendall at 2160, and Stephen Smith at 1480. Um, you know, I, I will go ahead and offer my thoughts on it. I, I believe that we do have someone who's clearly been evaluated, uh, above the others. Uh, it's certainly a person that I believe would fit well as the city attorney. Uh, we have had the opportunity to do the interviews with, uh, the, these three candidates at this point. Um, I would certainly be in a position at this time to recommend, uh, Brittany Walker as the city attorney. Other thoughts? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, um, I wasn't surprised at the composite score for Brittany Walker because I'm, I've been so incredibly impressed with her. I've had, uh, several opportunities to ask her for information and, um... So I have had that experience of actually having to, getting to interact with her and, and finding her responsive and knowledgeable. I would say that when I, when we fir-, I first met her, my biggest concern was, um, experience and age. And I've been, um, from my perspective, I've been proved wrong. I, I, and the fact that we received glowing letters about her and, and recommendations. So, um, I have no qualms about saying that she is my first choice and, and that I would support a possible contingent, uh, giving her a contingent job offer.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I certainly, uh, feel the same way. Um, I believe that, uh, Ms. Walker's knowledge of the open meeting law, the NRS, legislative issues, contracts and real estate, and her willingness to work with the public, the staff and the council. And I am very, very pleased to be the third to say yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I just want to say that, um, you know, I think as far as the process, we're a step ahead with the city attorney position than the city managers and that we've been able to meet with them all personally and had in-person interviews with them. Um, we already have them narrowed down to three, whereas, you know, the city manager has another step to do still. So, um, I think that, you know, we are a step ahead and are able to do a contingent job offer at this time. And based on the evaluation scoring, um, it does look like the, um, council has a consensus, um, of towards, you know, the placement of those, um, candidates. Um, I just want to say they were all very qualified to fill the position, um, and all had different, um, set of skills that would, um, benefit the city. Um, but clearly, um, I think that, um, one has raised by the other and, um, interacting city attorney Brittany Walker. And I agree that, um, she does have a diverse amount of, um, experience, um, with other agencies. Her role in the legislature has been very beneficial to us as we've seen, um, the, um, reviews and recommendations that she has received, um, and I, and she has been able to, you know, have a little bit of time to, to prove herself and I think she has. So, um, I would also recommend Brittany Walker a contingent job offer.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I think it's, it's obvious that, that Ms. Walker has had the opportunity, um, to display all of her many qualities and that, that obviously is an advantage. But, um, even outside of that has been mentioned, you know, the, um, those who have worked with her throughout the many different roles in her career, um, have had, you know, nothing but the, the best words and commendations for her, um, to say, you know, she, you know, has, you know, state legis-, members of the state legislature, county commissioner, you know, associate dean of, of the, um, William S. Boyd School of Law. Um, and, and for me, which is really important, I've, I've heard a lot of great things from the public about the work that she's been doing as well. Um, so I, I would be proud to add my name to that list as well. I, I certainly believe that, that she is, um, not just ready for the job, but she is, um, the, the absolute right person for this job at this time. So, um, I would like to see Ms. Walker appointed to the office of city attorney of Boulder City.
Thank you. And I would just like to add, you know, I, I mentioned the, the overall scoring that we had. Certainly, the other two candidates, uh, have, as Councilmember Folda mentioned, uh, some great skill sets. One of the things that I've heard a- as being, uh, a question is the length of time that, uh, Ms. Walker has been, uh, admitted to the bar. When I look at a city attorney's position, um, I, I don't see that person as being a litigator. In other words, someone who spends a great deal of time in a court of law. Uh, we would hope not anyway. Uh, Mr. Booker is here today. He's our prosecutor, uh, has been for a number of years now. Uh, what I do look at a city attorney for is someone who can assist the council in developing policy. And, uh, Ms. Walker has years of experience at the state legislature, uh, working in conjunction with other governmental bodies like the Regional Transportation Commission. Uh, I think she's well-suited for the position. And as several of you have already noted, uh, the recommendations that have come from those people that have worked with her in those various roles, uh, have clearly been outstanding in highly recommending her for this position. So, Ms. McKee, I, I think we're unanimous here. Okay, I, I will make a motion then that we provide a contingent job offer to Ms. Brittany Walker. I would recommend that, in addition to your work, Ms. McKee, the city does have a contractual agreement with the labor attorney. And that attorney has already looked at a draft contract. And Mr. Bolt, uh, is familiar with that. So in addition to making the recommendation for a contingent job offer, it would be to use that existing draft contract agreement as the basis for making the offer. And also contingent, I believe you had mentioned there was a health check.
And a background check.
And background.
Second.
Any further discussion?
We would need to know a salary.
Um, I, I believe we've set out the range already. We had, uh, agreed on what the range would be. And I, I think that's part of the process, uh, for the negotiation.
Okay.
Uh, again, any thoughts on that from other members? All right, any other discussion? Ms. McKay, is that sufficient for the motion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And with that, uh, we'll come to item number three, our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to make comment, uh, on any issue? The phone number is available, 702-589-9629. Speakers have up to five minutes.
Public comment?
Hi, this is Sharon Newby. I'd like to make a public comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, first of all, I want to compliment the ca-, uh, council on this long day and long night last night. You got a lot accomplished. Um, we have some excellent candidates for city manager. There are several that I have for my top three. And then I'm so pleased to welcome Brittany, uh, Walker to our community. Thank you, council, and have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Yes, this is Judy DeShane. I'd like to make public comment, please.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is Judy DeShane. I was wondering if you could clarify those timelines again for what happens n- next? Like the 21st, that's just evaluating? That isn't the in-person interviews? Is that correct? And that the date for the in-person hasn't been set yet? It's really difficult sometimes to follow what's going on where it's an all-day thing like this and you guys have to cut out to, um, grade sheets. So if you could clarify the timelines again for what happens, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
And just for edification, the point we're at in the city manager process is that the, uh, Ms. McKee will be compiling the evaluations. And we will tentatively meet on the 21st to review those and potentially identify two or three candidates for in-person interviews. Again, this is the final public comment period. The phone number is 702-589-9629. This is the final public comment period for the special council meeting. Anyone wishing to call in and speak on any issue? The phone number, 702-589-9629. All right, hearing no others for public comment, I will close the public comment period. Again, I want to thank Ms. McKee and all city staff. It's only been six and a half hours, so on top of our meeting last night that ended just after 11:00, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.